Your hair is shorter every time I see you. So your hair is shorter every time I see you. Why I'm already ready, right here. Over sixty miles. Take your shit and don't take me home.
That's good.
Yes. What was this man? Figures. I mean, I was in the building before they got to this point.
Just because of that settlement, or does it make any sense? He said that we have any aid, it's a moving out, this is a construction, this is right. You want to pay directly? The best, logic best in question. Sound better than that.
Hmm.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, that is.
It's not like how they have six inches that's still going to be happening in the building. Yeah. I see.
You're right.
Yeah. So you're taking a one percent. Are they here now, like you were? Right out here. When you're done with that, make sure to take that out. I wonder why they're all sitting on their sit-ways.
Hey, Mrs. Ty. How you doing?
Good.
Thanks for that.
Here's Popper's flat.
Doug, you ready?
Uh, yeah.
All right. That's probably the other, as the fighting is on information. All that most present. Jamie?
Yeah.
So you guys do some.
Progress to the product operation manual. It's at the top, right?
Yes, in progress.
Um, not with Eric yet, but I have updated it to make it look nicer and updated it on the website so that it's more fresh looking. But as far as the operations manual itself, I'm waiting.
You're happy with what you have so far?
Yes, but we'll see what today's outcome was. Okay. Exciting. So we have a plat to discuss. Did you want to go down the report or do you want?
We just have some, there's some alterations to a previous plat, is that?
Right, um, so if the turkeys are, have another plat in addition to what they thought, you know, um, they're it used to be altogether, uh, that tract five. They added tract five A and tract two A, um, to split out the portion in between Tom and Gary's house.
Is that a strip, that strip that's tempting, why didn't he?
No, there's a tract of land in between Tom and Gary that's about two acres. So they didn't, they don't want to include that because I'm a, my assumption is, is that they're going to sell tract five A separately. Because the person that may want to buy that doesn't want to get that two acres in between their house. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Is everything?
Everything's good.
In order?
Yeah. Yep.
I move we approve.
We need that revision more.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you can, you can maybe walk in here.
So move.
Second.
Then motion of second to approve the changes in the plat. We got a discussion. Eric got all those in favor.
Aye.
At the same time, motion carries.
Um, and pro provided our bill permits for the month of July. Um, you can see what they all are there. Evidence on a noise, just so you know, they're removing an old deck and adding a new one. And this says unknown there.
Okay.
So that is what people in the county are up to this month.
Uh, Jamie, just questioning.
Yep.
I see that AVM had put on, put it, requested building permit to replace the damaged rainbills.
Yes.
Is that necessary? You got a building permit to re-
Yes, if you, if you breathe our ordinance, yes. Um, they called and then I did some thorough investigating, but on the permit itself, I actually found one. There is a spot for them to mark whether they are new, addition, repair, or moved, or removed. So yes, we have it in our ordinance that it is required for them to get a building permit to do that. We just did, um, they told that they completed one building permit, but they were charged for two because they're doing two, two structures.
Do we have to know who's doing the work?
Do we have to, do we have it?
If I was on, on there.
Uh, it might be, I'm sorry.
Do, uh, do most, do most producers that have damaged rainbills, can we get a building permit? I'd ask them because I've got two of them, they have wind damage this time. Is this normal procedure that, that producers are supposed to be coming in and getting building permits for an insurance? It's likely an insurance claim to replace those beds and repair them. If, I'm just.
I know you're just asking Jim. It does say it in our ordinance, but if you're doing any sort of change to your structure, whether you're doing new, adding new, repairing, all of that.
This is something that we should, uh, cover in the press, some public notice stuff, because I'm, ours have been damaged before and the insurance took them down and put them back up through.
I'm completely well aware of what goes on. Prior to my job here, so yes, I, I mean, and my husband puts bring them up, so I know.
Looks a bit, though.
It depends on what the actual structure is. So it goes, we have a fee schedule, you, are you familiar with it?
Yeah, I, I know.
So like zero to fifty thousand dollars, it's thirty-five dollars, and then it goes up in a, yeah, yeah.
I'm Jim Hannibal. Would, would there be a, would there be a purpose to, would there be a purpose of collecting fees for?
You know, I'm.
How if we're having a good building permit for something, a structure that's already there? Um, if it's, if it's just being repaired and some insurance repair, I myself can see the logic in that, why?
I was not here thirty years ago.
I understand, I understand. This is just, actually, when I saw that AVM had applied for a building permit, it's like, those were already there, I'm just repairing them. But that's, that's something that maybe we should address in the future.
Okay, I will add that to my list of, uh, conversations with the zoning and our congressmen.
Maybe not with AVM, I'd agree, I'd imagine there would be projects where there would be a significant enhancement on what existed before, or higher.
Right, right, once, you know, and I will say that I already conversated, you know, colonize asbestos at least, and I get, because I was like, what do you mean, why do they need to do this? I get why you're asking that, Jim. Um, because that structure that's going up now is new and I can, and the cost of it is a lot more money than what they put it up originally.
Yeah, but, okay, uh, this is maybe only opinion here, but my insurance policy is replacement value policy. So they're just going to put a structure up just like what I have there before, yes, it's new, but.
Okay, does that cost of replacement that's on your insurance policy reflect what the assessed value is on your, on that structure? Something to make.
I don't know, interested in discussing, and it's, it's something you look into, because, because in situations where you're only, you're only reticing on what is damaged, this, this is saying that you had a year with your car and you go in, uh, to the body shop, you have the front clip replaced and repainted. Does the front clip of that car have more value because it's suddenly painted and new friends are?
You know, and I guess, from my office purposes, I guess, the reason why, to me, that we would get the permit, it would let me know that, hey, how else am I going to know Jim Ashenbaum, so, all this, all this then went down? How, how am I going to know that? I'm not driving the county daily, looking at everybody's structures, like, oh, Dan got straight line wind to his rainbin, and I'm going, I should probably.
I haven't been driving around.
To, to answer your question about.
So how else am I going to track that, I guess?
Uh, to answer your question, my insurance did go up, two thousand dollars issue, my fireman's insurance specifically because of the cost of construction.
Okay.
You know, so, so they are, they are addressing that replacement value policy, saying, hey, if something is damaged, you know, it's going to cost a lot more to replace it.
So maybe we need to discuss whether, if, if it's a repair thing, maybe they get the building permit, I give them a permit, but do we insue a fee? I mean, I just don't know, Jim, I can see your wheels turning.
I never, I've never understood why insurance companies charge higher and higher premiums on buildings, but there's a replacement value, it was a feature of policy on buildings. They're going down and down and down and down. You got a chicken coop out there that's been, hasn't been used in fifty years, but you're still paying premium on the higher issue than you paid last year. Why?
Sure, I don't know that, and I don't want to know that. So, but you get where I'm going, like, as far as why I would need this permit, because I would not know if you had a damaged structure that I was going to have to reassess and, and take me back to town.
Question. There it is.
What's next?
The discretionary formula.
Okay. Um, Jim, I know you called me with some questions. Um, if we decide to do the discretionary, uh, the city, if they see that we sign a resolution for this discretionary formula for residential, for whatever we decide, they will look at it and say, yeah, we like that, or if they decide that, no, we really don't want the county to do a discretionary formula within the municipality, you know. They could decide that, but we can just implement it and go with it.
If we did, it wouldn't be effective until the twenty-four tax received year, is that right? So it wouldn't affect anything for next year?
Right.
What are you guys' thoughts?
The, the question, the question I have, Jamie, comes from a discussion I had with a friend similar at the Wahi district meeting here on Friday. And, and whether, because I did have some questions about if we, if we, uh, sort out just part of the county or a certain neighborhood or whatever, and, and she told me without any doubt that we can declare the entire county collectively as a redevelopment.
Right, we could just make the whole county as a redevelopment and then apply the discretionary to the entire county rather than just applying it to a small portion of within Miller or whatever. And I agree with Jim, if, if we were to adopt this, I feel like it should be something done countywide, not just for the city. So if someone in the country is, has been thinking about, you know, putting up a new house or, or whatever, they could get that same break as well.
If you went all those links to the South Dakota law, this is, it comes from getting, basically getting rid of slum areas or un, unmaintained properties, uh, but if we're going to, I don't, I don't foresee if we're getting rid of, uh, slum areas anywhere in county, but if we're going to, um, give any new construction in the county a tax break, I think it should be applied countywide. It shouldn't, it shouldn't apply to a particular neighborhood or a particular section of town or a particular township in the county. It should be applied countywide if it's applied, because that, that's my feeling, is.
I agree with that a hundred percent, otherwise it's discrimination against people who are not receiving this favorite treatment and who want to sell a lot for something to build on it.
Right.
But it isn't, it isn't.
And my, my theory was if it helps, if it helps promote, uh, new building, new taxable properties in the county, then it's, even though we use a little bit of upfront, um, for value tax, we still have a building or a structure or housing development, whatever, whatever it may be, that will be taxing for fifty years or more, up front, so. Anyway, that would be my suggestion, if we're, we're going to implement this, that we make it countywide.
Maybe.
I don't know, we could make a decision on this.
It's got to be, be.
Um, before November one, we need to decide to do that, because then we might have to start publishing in the paper. The resolution, right, that's my current.
Resolutions printed within the minutes.
Okay.
They just need to choose temporarily.
Okay, so.
Basically, they would want it for five to seven years.
Well, no.
This, this would be in addition to the current one, so we would have the one for five years on the A and.
We can change that.
Yes, that one, but that one is staying the same. This is just in addition, this is another discretionary formula that we would adopt.
For residential.
Right, yeah.
Does, is any of the board feel that we should, because the, the resolution, the, the draft resolution does not contain wording in it that, um, this would be applied countywide, should this be readressed next month with, with no wording in that resolution that it was applied countywide, or?
Um, well, it says for coming up, I'm just reading it. Um, the only thing that I see different from the current, from our current one, it does, it does basically state that it also applies to municipalities within the county. Um, so I don't know if we need to add that to this, because our current one does state that.
It has, it has redevelopment neighborhood in that wording. All we really need to do is clarify that the entirety of the county is a redevelopment neighborhood, is that how we would handle that?
Yes.
I mean, motion.
And then, and then we have to decide on, if we want to, are we going to follow the percentages that they recommend? Or do we want to, it's those are the only alterations we can make, I believe.
The resolution you're looking at is what they offer us, you guys.
Right.
You get the word of the heart if you want.
Jamie, do you know of any other counties altered with this that percentage, or they just?
Not, no.
Oh, this is, no. Do we need a motion?
I can't remember that number.
Because it's twenty-five, twenty-five, fifty, fifty. Seventy-five, seventy-five, one hundred.
Do we need a?
What city have to say yes to this?
The city?
No.
Fifteen.
I emailed Alton, but Wendy told me that they did not.
So can the city pass their own?
They can if they decide to, yes.
And, and then theirs within what, over riding the county?
Um.
Within the city.
Within their, yes.
The city limits, yeah.
That's.
I don't perceive them doing something like that. Just kidding. You want, have any? So you guys don't even know what we, what we're talking about.
We have a great, uh, bills, what, houses, we'll gain back, and houses is a little bit like.
We haven't got.
Might not let it.
A little, we're giving up here.
But I, you know, they're already doing the current one, so if you put a certain structure, it's out of the limits of the limits, just getting that.
First, first two.
Within.
We got, next to. Jamie?
Right. Yes, I'm sorry.
Are we going to recollect those taxes before this?
Yes, we do.
Okay, are we going to collect and pursue it to our earlier revised discretionary formula? Or the one that is in place for the city of Miller and for its evaluation and assessment and tax collection purposes? Because our decision will affect the city's finances.
Yes.
They're not on board with it.
Yes.
So I think we need to know where the city stands on this before we decide anything.
I don't disagree. I, I, I have emails out.
If, if I'm reading this right, we could put this on countywide, and the city can, if they don't like it.
Opt out.
They can, they can opt out, right. If that's the case, then.
Okay.
Because that's, that's kind of the way it reads, that they, they've got the ability to opt out. It's just whether we want to put it on countywide or not, which I think we should, so.
If we're going to do it, let's say countywide, we're on right.
Doug just made a suggestion, the very first sentence at the top of the resolution, uh, whereas the county of hand, state or South Dakota has deemed it in the best interest of the county, uh, could we add the word entire county to adopt the resolution?
I think by, by just saying.
I don't know if it's necessary.
I don't think it's necessary, the county is adopting it, where adopting it has a county.
That.
I, I think that's just.
So what the question asks, do we, do we need to declare the entire Upan county redevelopment? Redevelopment neighborhood, we just came from a mixed assumption.
Why would I have to make such a, a force, is there something like?
Um.
Discretionary.
Because.
Here, you don't have to justify it, it's the law.
Because this original request. About people, not these people, it's not the laws, the original request to, to Jamie, because of that, the thing with development, and also, you know.
Um, then it would be like, oh, yeah, I do want that course a lot, and they'll know obviously because I, I have time to sell my house. And what?
I don't think we need to, I don't either, I think we have a.
Did I explain that?
It was, it sounds like my turn to say, why is it coming from county accounts?
Alright.
I mean, that would be included in the question that proposed.
Okay, so are, are we going to just decide to adopt it after we can clear back from, or we're just waiting for the grant?
I don't know if it's necessary, I think, when is it adopted?
Yeah, no.
They can make their own decision.
Okay.
If we feel that if we want to adopt it, I guess, that we have to decide, if we're going to adopt it and have this, we need to tell them those percentages, I think.
But she said nobody's part of it so far.
I was recommended, um, twenty-five, twenty-five, fifty, fifty, seventy-five, seventy-five, and that a hundred is, you need seven here, right?
Correct.
And you say nobody else, nobody has changed that form.
I already seen you.
I think we should do it.
And we can only depart lower, correct, or SS, that are lower, they can't go higher than the recommended values.
If, if, if we implement this discretionary formula, we can only add lower percentages, not higher?
Correct.
How many, do you know of any other counties that adopted it, as the fighting broadly have adopted it yet?
No, um, Duncan, that state where, the closest one, the closest one that it does that has one is State County. I does not have one, I don't believe Eagle County has one. Eagle County, of course, does, because they're larger counties and they have a big city, um.
We used to have the most generous discretionary formula in the state, and then the state legislature got decided, uh, decided it was too generous to pass legislation at that level, restricting what we could use for discretionary formula to go back.
Less of a percentage, but not much, you hear right now, so.
With, with the statement that, that we have determined Han County to be, Han County in its entirety to be this redevelopment neighborhood, I would move to approve resolution twenty-two-two-six.
It's not the final formula.
Right?
It's not the final order, there's, not that your motion doesn't have merit, but.
There's.
It has to be added.
Yeah, the.
We have to fill in the percentages and we have to decide if, if we're going to use it in this rough form, there's three options under. And that first part there was what type of structures are going to come into play.
I think maybe we should do this at another meeting, we could do this right now.
So we have.
Do you have any problem with editing at a, at a meeting?
Well, he made a motion, so if, if there's no second, it'll die as a, I guess, and we can reevaluate, but.
Um, so, so to add to my motion, that we check all three boxes at the top. If, if you guys are on board with that, we would fill in A twenty-five percent, B twenty-five percent, C and D fifty percent, E and F seventy-five percent, and G would be a hundred percent.
I think it might be better to let the city digest the consequences of this.
There's.
Consequences up to them, as to whether or not they would envision the city sticking with that formula, sticking with the old, or somehow she.
They have the option to opt out of participating in a, in a, you guys talk to Jamie and, and decide if this works for the city.
But I'm with Jim, I think we should pass it as exactly as he's proposing, I just think we should be wise to hear back from the city first.
It's still, we're still, we're still going to pass it, if we're going to pass it, the city still has an option.
They have the option to do whatever they want to do.
Yeah, they can accept it or.
Because this isn't forcing them to do any, I don't, you would be nice if you don't say.
Did you? Jamie, did you do any, like, just random calculations, I, I didn't, obviously?
Um, I emailed, didn't I? Yes, I emailed you guys all the spreadsheet on.
You did?
Okay.
About thirty airports across South Dakota and North Dakota. And the city received notice in the paper about some wind turbines coming up. And so they reached out to me, their consultant, and I'm here with Mike and Tammy from the council. We met last week, last night and talked about it. So I handed out a little packet of information. The first one is a statement, you know, I'll just touch on the high points. It kind of sums up what the, what the city, how the city feels about it. The second attachment is not professional. I just did a quick and dirty Google image with the airport up in the corner in red with an extended runway line in yellow and then the majority of the towers. The second Google image is kind of a blow up of the yellow runway centerline. And then an orange line is approximately two miles away from that, which we'll be discovering, discussing further. And then the fourth packet is the public notice that's out right now. The FAA is doing an aeronautical study on the wind towers and the met towers right now. And I want to refer you to page seven, which I'll talk about. Specifically, you know, as I mentioned, there's, they're proposing eighty-six wind towers, three met towers. And in this study that FAA is looking at, they do, anyone, you know, if you're putting up a tower, anyone should have to do a, an aeronautical study. Anything above, I believe the rule is a hundred and fifty feet. So obviously, the company that's putting these towers up knows that. And they've submitted each one of these towers into this airspace study. And it's out for public notice, which means it's a big deal. Most air studies that I've been, well, every airspace analysis I've ever done and about eleven years I've been working at Hilton Associates, I've never had that, we've never got out for public notice because it's never been of concern or, or anything like that. They will come back at the end of the public notice and at the end of their evaluation with each individual tower being hazard to air navigation or not. Hazard to air navigation is typically how they come out. We all know that they're going to be lighted. However, specifically, being an airport consultant and talking with the city of Miller, there are roughly, and this is just my quick calculation, who just got this at the end of last week, twenty-two dozen, twenty-five towers that are within two miles of the VFR, the visual flight rules flight path into the runway, which is the, you know, the centerline of the runway. So you can fly IFR, you can fly VFR, but there's pilots here. You know, Jim can explain that way better than I can. But basically, if someone's not using GPS approaches and everything, they're flying visually into the airport. And about two dozen of these air, these towers are within, you know, two miles of that. It's pretty easy to get off by two miles in an airplane, you know. I would hope not, but those specific towers are ninety-one feet above what they'd like to see in that area. Four, you know, five hundred feet or less is, is what the fourteen CFR part seventy-seven surfaces require. And, and these are all five hundred and ninety feet, so about ninety-one feet above that.
Is lighting a mitigating factor then for those two towers?
Um, it, it, it helps, but it's not, it's still going to be, it's still going to be considered a potential hazard in my opinion.
Does the FAA consider it a potential hazard?
Yes.
Then why are they approving it?
They're, they have not approved it. That's the public notice.
I was gonna say, it's under letter yet.
Yes, so they're actually, it's out for public notice now. And they're telling us that they're studying it, each one of these towers. And it's out for public, public comment right now, and which ends obviously.
Is there anything that we, as a county commission, that granted the permit in this business can do about it at this point? We put the conditions upon Mark's company, including all of the lighting requirements at the time that the permit was issued, the conditional use permit.
Okay.
What can we do at this point?
Um, I don't know. That's why we're here, to talk about it. I just learned about it. I just heard about these towers. I guess I would make a recommendation that if they're considered part of these aeronautical studies, if it comes back that they're considered a hazard to air navigation, that that's something that the commission.
Can we ask Mark at this point, what would be the response? Is that a?
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to clarify a few points that Brooke made that might not be exactly factual correct. So with the FAA, when you ultimately file for approval on any structure that is over five hundred feet, you go through what is called the circularization process. And that is a public comment process. Remember, FAA is mandated to ensure aeronautical safety as well as safety of the public. So anytime you file over five hundred feet, you go through a public comment process, which Brooke referred to, which the FAA referred to as circularization. So Brooke brought up eighty-six wind turbines plus three met towers. So we as a company always file our primary wind turbines, our alternate turbines, and any of our potential met towers that we have. Nothing has changed with the project. We still have seventy-one primary wind turbines and we will still install one permanent met tower. So we will not be installing eighty-six and three, we'll be installing seventy-one wind turbines and one met tower. So the reason for the public comment process is we filed for over five hundred feet. Why didn't we file for over five hundred feet? So General Electric, with their wind turbines, they come in two different tower heights. You can have an eighty-nine meter tower, which means your turbine tip height is four hundred eighty-six feet. Or they come in a hundred fourteen meter tower, which means you're about five hundred twenty-five feet. So area on the side of caution, we filed for over five hundred feet, they could be might be able to use that taller tower. General Electric has since come back to us and said, the wind speed is actually so robust here in South Dakota, they will not approve us to use a hundred fourteen meter tower on the wind turbines, meaning they'll have the eighty-nine. So what does that mean? The tip height of our turbines will be four hundred eighty-six feet tall. We in fact did not need to go through this public comment period with FAA. We just simply did so out of an abundance of caution. In the event we needed to use that taller tower, that would be five hundred twenty-five feet. So getting on the next point that Brooke brought, lighting. So the FAA determines what your lighting standards are for your wind turbines. We've seen the pendulums switch, you know, switch back and forth within FAA requirements over the years. So the FAA went through a period of time to require every single wind turbine to have FAA light. That, the pendulum swung and they said, you only need your perimeter turbines lit up. Now they just went back all the way to say, every single wind turbine ultimately needs an FAA light. So we fully anticipate every single wind turbine is going to be required to have FAA light. Here in the state of South Dakota, the state legislature requires you to operate with an aircraft detection lighting system, which I had detected here previously discussed with commissioners. It's a very revolutionary technology that actually keeps the turbine lights off roughly ninety-nine percent of the time. And that is actually required through the state legislature. And we have to comply ultimately with the state legislature. So going back to the aeronautical studies that we mentioned, the nearest primary wind turbine that we have to the Miller Airport is seven miles. I mean, the wind farm is a long way from the Miller Airport, I thought it was six point two.
That's according to theirs, that's according to the information that they put in the, into the system, that it says six point two.
Yeah, and remember we filed a general primary and our alternate. She could be referring to an alternate or primary turbine that we installed seven miles from the airport. So just want to remind everyone in the room of the history here in Hand County with wind farm development. We had a tiny wind farm outside Greve Heights. It was studied by the FAA. We haven't worked on that project, it went back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and seven. So this area of South Dakota in Hand County has been studied through the aeronautical studies with the FAA from two thousand and seven to present. When the FAA ultimately approves your structure, they issue what is called a determination of no hazard. Your determination of no hazard is good for eighteen months. You can refile, and refile is good for another eighteen months. So when you look at from two thousand and seven to present, over fifteen years, you look at, there have probably been no less than twenty filings done with the FAA. I mean, of those twenty filings, there are probably been three that went through the circularization process, the public comment process. And after the FAA has studied, they've determined there's no safety concerns with respect to aeronautical safety, and DNHS has been issued. And we fully anticipate DNHS to be issuing again here for a sweet wind farm for seventy-one wind turbines, tip height four hundred eighty-six feet, and one permanent met mass.
So everything's under four ninety-eight?
Correct. We filed out of an abundance of caution over five hundred feet.
You guys don't know that, you mean?
They did not.
That is not how they filed, that's not what's out for public comment. What he's saying is very different from what, from information that we've been given and what's, what's been presented. Three, two, two different things.
What are we supposed to be governed by? You're telling us, or was it the FAA is telling us?
That, that big book right there. So, I mean, Brooke had taken her life reading, that's our PUC application, that's approval from the Public Utility Commission. Right next year, it is approval from the federal government and the Bonzi Finding and Designing Impact. We also have a previous determination of no hazards that have been issued for the project that is a big book on the body. So, I mean, this is part of the process that we go through. Once your eighteen months runs up, you have to refile with the FAA. We just go out of an abundance of caution for over five hundred feet, all our primaries, all of our alternates. And we don't anticipate any issues where we got to change that.
Okay, now, as you receive your revised plans, the call for everything less than five hundred feet, is that what you're saying?
We have not produced the tip height at this point. Our previous filing, Jim, that was approved by the FAA, was actually for five hundred ninety-nine feet.
Yeah.
And that was, again, turbine manufacturers are always adjusting to height. They're making the lights a little bit longer, they're making the towers a little bit higher. So the issue that you get into, just as a developer knows, is you don't want to go in there and say, we're filing at exactly four hundred eighty-six feet, because General Electric changes the dimensions of the turbines just a little bit. And then you also have to go back and refile with the FAA.
Are you saying that the worst case scenario in terms of height on these towers is the one that you submit and approve with these, with the circularization process involved?
Yeah, so, so we filed for five ninety-eight, which is the maximum, if you will, secondary tier filing that you can do with the FAA. So you can also really file from five hundred to five hundred ninety-eight, four hundred to four ninety-nine. So we took the second tranche of verticals based, Jim, that you can file, giving us the five ninety-eight. Just in the event we could use that taller tower that does five hundred five. And let's say GTE was adjusted and comes in at like five thirty. So we were taking the maximum amount we could.
What assurance will we have in writing? And then they're making it enforceable against your government?
Yeah, so.
That that is the tower that will be installed?
So Jim, in the PUC application and in the approval from the Public Utility Commission, we've referenced two turbine types that could potentially be used here sweetly.
Correct.
And both those turbine types actually have a tip height reference as well. And that turbine technology was approved by the Public Utility.
So it's the PUC who's going to hold it to it, not the Hand County Commission?
That was, so if we had to change turbine technology types, we would not go back to the Public Utility Commission to get approval from, along with that.
Okay, and is the lighting that we discussed at great length, Nora, you remember very well, is that lighting still considered state of the art, cutting edge, the best there is?
It's what we insisted on. So each of the turbines will have an FAA light. And further the requirement here in South Dakota, we will have to operate with an aircraft detection lighting system. So that has not changed.
Does any of that allay any of the fears that arisen within you?
I'm here because it looks like roughly two dozen of them are above five hundred feet and within the two mile flight path, okay, you know, within two statute miles of the VFR flight path of the airport.
So if that's on FAA, we'll give you that.
Yeah, well, the information that the public notice has from FAA says that that's what it is.
Okay, but a simple, simple affirmation from the PUC that in fact this is the towers that Mark is describing will be installed here, should there things happen, correct?
If we can, so, yeah, I guess if.
Can we do that and do it immediately? Can you do that? Can you do that?
I'm, well, so what?
Only one confirmation from the PUC in writing that those are the towers that will be installed, the ones you've just described, and that's the ones that are in the FAA.
I know, I know.
It's, it's sort of a settlement stipulation, I mean. So I, I can issue a copy of the settlement stipulation.
Well, they need it, the city needs it.
Yeah, I mean, well, it's just, isn't that small binder right there? We, we can just take copies and provide it to you all, again, this whole city and this whole airport.
I have a question. What is the response to the city at this point, that we can't provide to the FAA?
Very similar to the printout that I gave you, that the city is opposed to having. It, it's just, the city has no jurisdiction. So they're replying to public comment that the city would be opposed to having structures above four hundred ninety-nine feet within two statute miles of the VFR flight path.
So the city is the operator of the airport, doesn't get permission, so is your station?
Not, not outside of the city limits or outside of airport property or three miles outside of city. They only have so much, they, they only have so much power. They, um.
Right, but they still have a voice, correct?
They have a voice, it's the first time that we in the city have thought of it at the end of last week. And so that's where.
Because the project's been ongoing for two years.
I was not aware.
So like I told you, I got those notices of any tower, we're looking at sixty-five, you know?
Yes.
You know, not to tell me?
I did not get this.
You should.
And so should.
I get an implication of when somebody puts a roof on a building, a tower gets.
And so should the aeronautics commissions, if they don't know what's good, don't do it, to know.
The South Dakota.
The aeronautics commission. Because then you should have.
We filed with the South Dakota Aeronautics Commission and have seek approval as well.
If you guys can get that information to them.
I'm, I'm sure that they approved it pending FFA differently.
Yeah, we got our DNHS and now we went to the South Dakota Aeronautical Commission. So, I mean, dotted our eyes, we crossed our teams here.
So what triggered this study?
We'll receive determination of hazards, yeah, for the fourth time on the line.
They do it earlier than, even if current.
My, my question is why this is coming up just now? Like, why, obviously, this has been, yeah, why, what triggered the, this current study that's saying that these may not be within the state?
So our previous permits ultimately sunsetted. We filed for new permits with FAA. As part of the filing, we filed over five hundred feet. So you go through the public notice comment, the airport received public notice at the end. So nothing's changed.
Wait, just, Cal, when I, I worked with the aerial spraying business out of Cal, we do a kind of flying out of journey. And then I just found out about this today, and I guess I don't know what you guys can do because everybody's talking to Air Cal, but it's completely irresponsible for you to build those that they were building. The most.
They're not that far. They're not.
I didn't mean.
There's sort of a seven mile.
Listen to me, Tom, you just, you. When you get to that runway coming from that direction, the most dangerous part of the line is they talk and land. And if they have a problem picking off the landing, they're going to be close to the ground in that seven miles. It's, they have places, they have conditions that, that it's completely irresponsible for you to do that, because no way goes to be allowed, no way.
So what do you consider that may interest?
It's just another hazard.
And I think that's what's wanting to be prevented, is that you can prevent those hazards before they go up and remove them out of danger zone.
Because that, that airplane's taking off and say, they're doing a hundred and forty miles an hour and they can't climb, guess what, now they're going to be able to scare freaking towers. They got enough going on, they've got emergencies. And there's something you'll, like, there's not happening there, there's all kinds of land out there. It doesn't have to get there. We'll, we'll give you a ride at a hundred and forty, you can sit there and see if you.
My, my dad was an aviation pilot, my dad was a plane instructor, my grandfather was an aviation pilot, so.
Jim, you guys, you never had those wind jets for your children.
My daughter did. We're going to be a mom around some crazy stuff, sir.
Yeah, I don't doubt that. But for, for what reason would you locate those towers in that area? Why don't you go somewhere where it doesn't affect the airport?
So, if some of the county commissioners know where a large plane owner is, who also has a very large aerial spraying business, and that individual signed voluntary wing lease and wants to see the project go. So, I mean, you do have folks that ultimately already fund support for the project.
That's got nothing to do with the hazards we're talking about here. You can locate them somewhere else that definitely can fit with the airport.
This project's known as FAA has approved new response on granting this determination of hazards as this project is not included with the airport.
Well, if it's within the power of this commission to restrict from putting them there, I hope that they'll do that. Because right now, we have a fairly safe approach to the Miller Airport. We like to keep it that way.
I'm just making my recommendation to the commission in the future to maybe reach out to the airports just to, you know, manuring airports, to at least, when the city gets a grain bin, you know, if, if Shayla finds out about something fairly tall getting constructed in the area of the airport, she calls me, we do an airspace study, you know, we at least gave them an idea, we helped through the process so that, so that the airport at least knows what's going on. Because the way it sure would be a lot cleaner if they weren't, you know, a little bit further away. I mean, you can see what they did, you know, it's not on the flight path, but it's close, you know, it's over a little bit, but, you know, there aren't any exactly right on the runways centerline, but they're shoved over just a little. It would, it would be a lot safer airport, if there weren't, you know, a dozen to two dozen right directly in line. Whether they're five hundred feet or not, so.
I think maybe the county commission and zoning boards' hands are tied into these circumstances I'm assuming from a residual legal standpoint here. We granted a conditional use permit based upon a whole bunch of conditions that they had to meet. One of which was, they had to meet absolutely every FAA requirement. Someone were hammered out at great length, including all of the lighting requirements.
I don't, I don't doubt that.
Jim, I don't think we can do anything about it as a county commission at this point. They've gotten approval. If the FAA says it's okay, once they've received your revised tower height plans, it's, it's not in our hair.
I'm going to be unbiased on this, I'm just going to say that there was probably, from what I could see, copies of things that were printed in the Miller press regarding such structures being put up. And where they were going, correct? My fault.
You're correct.
Okay. I just wanted to.
Okay, uh, yeah, I'm not too late, I guess.
Go ahead, Ellen. Okay, I, I want to just make one comment and then ask you a question. Okay, my comment is, you've got a gal here who makes no money additionally whether this project goes up or not. Her main interest here is public safety, okay? And we all know that crazy accidents happen. This gentleman is paid to make sure this project works more. That's my statement. You decide when you are listening to me. My question is, which one of you guys is going to climb to the top of that tower and make sure that those blades are the length that they say you could put up? Because we all know it's so much easier to ask forgiveness than permission. Thank you.
Yeah.
My question was too, are we going to know how tall they are, really? And the other thing is, have you switched where the wind towers are going to be? And like, the runway is, is right here and we can count the number of towers that are in that runway and wonder how safe that is. Right here, it's, it's in your maps. Look at how many of those are in the yellow area, the yellow area. This is eighty-six wind towers and the other one said seventy-one. And have these changed from the original places that they were going to?
They must have changed a little bit. It's going from eighty-six to seventy-one, so.
Yeah.
If, if, they're not all going to be constructed.
Yeah, but still, you know, think about the hospital plane flying in and out of here too, guys, you know?
Absolutely.
I would be most concerned with the approach, if you're using the GPS approach. That's, that's a little bit different than the visual flight, you know, Sunday afternoon flyer, the egg operators and stuff like that. Obviously, having it in the flight path is, is not safe. But being able to use your instruments, I think, makes it a little bit safer, but that's not how everybody flies.
I've got a question in regards to this required lighting or the, um, the most up to date or best lighting that could be put on these towers. If we split to, how far can a pilot see that, see that lighting in dense fog?
Well, remember, here in the state of South Dakota, the state legislature requires you to use an aircraft detection lighting system. So what that means is, those FAA lights are topped roughly ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of the time. You don't see red blinking lights. So right, you know, I have, we're trying to build wind farms, we're not trying to, just as this gentleman said, you gotta build it with light glasses. So what's a concern a lot of folks have, you don't want to look at the red blinking lights. So go strip that concern ultimately up here and state legislature took action and said, you gotta have an aircraft detection lighting system, which means the lights stay off. So the way that that equipment operates is it forms a bubble around the wind farm, around all the turbines. And if you go within three miles of those turbines, it kicks on all of your FAA lights.
That's in Jim's office, still hasn't agreed?
Yes. If they're working.
Um, concerns citizens, there's the public comment period. So if you, if you want to write a letter, write a petition, if that's a favor work. So I'm here on behalf of the city just to share the information that we learned recently and have a conversation and, and let you know that we're always happy to, to help in anything that you need help with and make suggestions about maybe not putting it quite so close to runway centerline and those types of things. That would, that might, that would make the place a lot safer for, for the place. So, you're almost directly on the runway, extended centerline.
Once the public commentary has been received, what position is the FAA in order to achieve any changes?
I, I don't know that that will make any difference or not. But at least, at least there are, at least there are some of those concerns.
So we're not sure what the, so the FAA can make, can approve or deny that they have no enforcement in terms of the thing? But we're still unsure whether or not we have the, the four D.
The FAA.
To change a conditional use permit.
The FAA makes a determination based on a aeronautical.
Change, change.
The FAA makes a determination based on a aeronautical. So can we solve these structures, can the highway still remain safe? If the answer is yes, then the determination of no hazards.
If the AA, FAA is in receipt of your revised plans and the city is in receipt of your revised plans, there should not be any issues, correct?
That's right.
So maybe the whole thing is.
Legally speaking, we're still, just because something's in with the bounds of the law doesn't mean that it's a 100% safe or a good idea.
Well, here's the.
I understand that.
And I want to stand it on the record that I don't think my question was answered. How far those lights are visible in dense fog? I mean, you said you were complying with the requirements. I didn't answer my question of how, how far are the lights visible in dense fog?
I, I can ask that, we use a term called capillary space group. FAA likes that group on turbines, they're the same ones that go on skyscrapers and other, you know, structures all over the world. So I can ask CAG and they, they could provide me an answer. I can get it to get it the next week.
When is the next commission meeting?
September sixth.
Yeah, September sixth.
Yeah, yes, the comment period for the public notice is August eleventh and August eleventh, so. Appreciate your time, thanks for answering questions, thanks for answering questions. Just hope that in the future, maybe we consider the local airport and the flight plan, you know, just because FAA says that it's okay, doesn't necessarily make it safe. And I, I understand that there's maybe nothing that can be done now, but.
Why was the county commission meeting, or the scheduled venue for this public hearing?
Uh, we just met, the city just got the notice at the end of last week. So I met with them and explained what the letters, what the public notice letter had said and had conversations with them. And we discussed that we wanted to make sure that the county knew, that, that the city was just notified of this and that it, that it exceeds obstruction standards and that it's within, that several of them are within two statute miles of the VFR flight path. And so it doesn't always get noticed that the FAA reviews those things and I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that determination would need to be made by the FAA before things move forward. And if things don't change, I would have a hard time believing that FAA would come back saying that those two dozen, roughly two dozen towers within that two statute miles of the flight path would not be asked.
Could, could there possibly be any? Could there possibly be any um any negative or, I guess I'll say negative implications for the amount of air? Would they would they lose um any kind of of certification level or or status level for the airport?
No, um the the city is required to try and keep hazards out of, create obstructions and hazards out of their airspace to the extent practicable. And, you know, they'll they'll do everything in power by being here to make sure that you guys know that it's a potential hazard and and obstruction and it's out of their jurisdiction to be able to do anything about it except for let the people that may have some power to do something about it know that it could potentially be as applied for a hazard to the airport.
In response to Dan's comment about, if this is just brought up just Dan wasn't on the board, I wasn't on the board, were you on the board, Greg, when it was approved or discussed?
There was some discussion, yeah, but.
I I, in response to Commissioner Jones's comment, I don't ever believe our hands are tied. He said that before, our hands are never tied. We we, there was a decision made by the board that was seated at the time with the comment that our hands are tied, our hands are never tied. We we certainly have the responsibility to look into concerns of the citizen. And I don't know, I'd have to talk to Alton about whether we could ever alter and approve conditional use permit. I certainly don't like the comment that our hands are tied. That seems like an excuse.
Well, it may seem like an excuse. It's offered as, in my view, solid legal advice.
And he just borrowed this information last night from City Council meeting. That's why we're here today. That's what was presented, so.
We did time.
Right.
So did I last night.
Yeah.
We got one more question.
Yeah.
Uh just to comment in regards to what Mr. Asher Ron said. I think there was a tragic accident that happened out here. Because of this and because of this discussion today, somewhere there's an attorney who will untie your hands, so that's your role. I think your points are as well.
In other words, you don't place a lot of value in our word. When we sign a contract, when we issue a permit, when we give a conditional use permit under these circumstances and under these conditions, all of a sudden, we can renegate? Is that what you're saying, Ellen?
I I think your conditions have changed a bit because we're, were you guys until last night aware of the possible hazards at the airport? I think that if you know, they know to you, you might look at this project completely differently.
Our requirement is.
Brand new.
Our requirement is that they have to meet all FAA conditions, period. All of them.
What I would ask for that, okay, it's.
Yeah. I I would just make a request in the future if it comes up to to have someone that knows, you know, has the knowledge of the airport. I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily say to get rid of, you know, all of them. I, you know, my initial reaction would be keep them out of the flight path a little bit better than now, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You guys have made aware of the agenda meeting last night? It wasn't in your agenda package, but you brought it up Thursday?
Oh, on Fridays.
Okay. So we had a chance, when did your mail arrive?
What's that?
When did the notice?
It's in the bar, I believe. Cause mine came over a week ago. I got mine. When I did it by email.
I know.
We got mine on Friday, you haven't been using it.
There was a notice that was gonna. I I pulled off the air study, the notice just had numbered on it. Um and and I was, I understand what those numbers mean, but they're not, you would understand that what those mean. Um unless someone understands what the air model study numbers mean, that that's too.
Right, but if they're an interested party, you're gonna know what that means.
Right.
And if you don't, you're gonna find out.
Exactly, so that's what they did.
Cause I got a lot smarter thanks to the help of Nora on how this works.
Yep, so and that's what they did. They reached out to someone who understands it a little bit more and pulled that information out. And that's concerns when it's above on its five hundred feet.
I think maybe part of the the timing issue is if you got the notice, let's say last Wednesday, that should probably be shared with you a lot sooner than Friday.
Okay.
Somebody else.
And probably not waited until Monday to do it.
The timing, it sounds like this should have happened not last week, this should have happened two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should have told them all time.
And that's probably, that's my question on this one scouter, who, Sweden, whoever um initially made the application or whatever you do, the process through the FAA, wouldn't they, wouldn't you guys known that you were outside the bounds of the FAA or?
No, so so remember, when you file with the FAA, the permit that you receive is a determination of no hazard. And it is good for eighteen months. So that is the reason why there's an additional notice done is because our existing permit set expired. We refilled it FAA to get a new one first. So that that is the reason why this new notice went out.
So, excuse me, special. You've already been approved by the FAA once.
Oh, we've been. We've been approved three times.
Every time that's at five hundred ninety feet?
Yes, last one was at five ninety-eight, I think, of the year, so.
I just wanna clarify.
Yeah, yeah, the pilot has been progressing no less than three times pretty slowly with FAA.
And the the PUC that that has been approved, that PUC, that's at four hundred and eighty or wherever?
Correct, we submitted two turbine types to the PoliQ totally condition. One had tip high of four hundred and eighty-six feet, other one had tip high of roughly five hundred and twenty-five feet. And both of those turbines were approved from the uh PUC. Anytime per condition of our permit from the PUC, anytime we move a winter rail to two hundred and fifty feet, we actually have to go back to PUC and get approval. Oftentimes when you move a turbine that much, you have to go back to the FAA and get approval for that turbine. So there's a very stringent rigorous process on how to get approval for a turbine.
Okay, and when they're all done, somebody comes and inspects them?
Yeah, so what happens with the FAA has a really good point again, bring it up. So what happens with FAA is there's really a three-step process. So one, you initially apply and either get rejected or yet approved. And you might get rejected for all of your turbines or some of your turbines at your employees' proximity to the flight path. So one, you get your approvals. Two, you actually have to provide a notice when you start construction. So that's the second step FAA goes to. And then third, what you have to do is you have to provide a notice again to the FAA and be inspected when you reach your maximum tip high of your turbine. Your structure is actually fully installed.
Does someone actually come out and inspect it and and make that determination or is that just based on?
It's generally paperwork. I mean FAA might send someone out in certain instances if you have a big test or a fall structure.
For certification, that notification is clicking a box saying, yep, we reached our greatest height. And on this day, it's just clicking a box. No one actually goes out and inspects it and promises that my work, you know, it's.
So it's whatever information they provide.
Yes, yes.
Well, they can obtain the manufacturer's specs.
Yes, absolutely, but but.
It's no mystery.
No, but nobody actually physically goes out and inspects and measures how tall it is or surface.
Why would you have to? If you know what the manufacturer's specs are, you know how tall it is, you know how wide it is.
Yep.
Measured on the ground.
Yes.
Just so I can clarify, on the point, I apologize. So three times before you've been approved by the FAA, so three times prior to this, this notice has been set out.
So, um to clarify, Jan, we were filing at less than four hundred and ninety-nine feet. I forget how many files we did for less than four ninety-nine. Remember, we've only hit all the neighbors under five hundred and tall. So this time we filed for five hundred. I can say with certainty, previous time we filed under five hundred, I believe all the previous times were all for four ninety-nine plus.
So.
We're going for places we store less than five hundred.
Yeah, and and just last time. No, last time we're going for five hundred. This is our second.
Do you have two different layers of structure that's supposed to go on?
Well, we're actually gonna use the shorter journey. We're gonna use the four hundred.
Is there guaranteed if we're gonna approve for the higher one?
If this gets, when this gets approved, they'll be approved for higher.
Yeah.
If if it goes.
So is it guaranteed or not will go higher and it becomes a potential higher risk factor to the airport?
We're in South Dakota. The average wind speed is nine point eight meters per second. If we're gonna go taller than the eighty-nine meter turbine or tower, the turbines will start coming apart on us. So we have to actually get from the turbine manufacturer, it's called a master's load analysis, which is the man, the manufacturer's certification of that turbine, which we can actually perform like this. So they only approved us in use of the shorter turbine, four eight and six. So when you look at the ten turbines that are out here at three heights, the dimensions of our turbines are going to be very, very similar to the seven series at the highest. So when you look at the flight length and you look at the tower height, when you look at the total tip high, they're roughly the same size as the turbines you see out here. So we actually have to be approved by the turbine manufacturer to use this specific type of turbine. Why? It's similar, you go down to the GMC dealer, you buy pickup truck, you ultimately get your warranty package. We get a warranty package from General Electric, companies and machines. So we can't install a machine that won't perform, that they ultimately want adhered to their warranty package on. We've only been approved for four eight and six, we can't go taller. You're welcome.
When do the wind towers have to be finished back?
There's really not a thorough completion date for the wind turbines. So the wind farm, just from a construction schedule standpoint, um we intend to have a whole project operational by October thirty first of two thousand twenty-three. So, but there's not a specific date in the world that we have to have everything completed by.
I'd like to know how it was determined that this meeting on this date was going to be the venue for public commentary on a matter we didn't know about until about twelve hours ago. Who decided that?
Public commentary.
So just public commentary.
Why is public comment being taken here? Why isn't it the armory? Why isn't it the city hall? Is it?
Shouldn't be taken here.
Is there any notion that it's a county issue? Is that, is that why it's here?
Hey, Jim, I found out about this an hour and a half ago.
That hit me.
Good question.
Well, who said it for here?
Brooke.
We just learned about it. So we wanted to have a conversation about it and and let you know.
But I think.
Our insurance was provided to your.
Brooke, I think that goes back to that comment you gave in the emails, would you inspect them?
We didn't have public info.
Okay.
Not that, not that. It's not on the agenda, we knew that, not.
Yeah, it's just a.
I mean, this isn't on the agenda, this is.
It's just a good time.
Public info.
So, thanks everyone for your time in the airport. Any other concerns among the public committee? General jury or motion to adjourn for sliding out? I have a motion to a second hold favor. Full same side, motion carried. You guys start as the board of commissioners, is there gonna be a break for a second, or do you? Keep going.
If you don't mind, can I take a minute?
Sure. Just take a, we'll take a minute.
Can I go before you take a break, please? So I can be downstairs and get that each time. All right, nevermind.
It'll be, it'll be, we're.
It sounds like I got two minutes, all I need is two minutes, I swear.
Yeah, I just.
You guys need your.
Yeah, I listen to you. I mean, it's better than none of them, but I'm, I, actually, I thought it would be worse in here by now, honestly.
Yeah.
I am glad that their fishing exists and it's not a hundred years ago before it existed, so. Can you imagine this during in July of nineteen twelve, was it nineteen twenty, nineteen thirty, nineteen thirty-two? It was a hundred and twenty degrees in in Anne Mallard. Can you imagine how much it was?
It grossed me out, man.
I bet it was. I don't know if the tempers learned that age.
So he would commission to me, right?
And we should have been.
Hundred and twenty degrees.
They'd strip.
Well, General, I gotta say, if you guys have the power to get them to locate those wind turbines out of their approach path to the airport, we should do it because we have a pretty nice safe approach to this airport. It's one of the big things that we've got going for us here. We shouldn't ever allow something that's gonna jeopardize the safety of the airport.
I look into it. I I honestly, I don't know whether we can alter an approved conditional use permit, I don't know about that. But I will certainly ask the questions of the right people. That's all I.
Well, if there's anything that I can do.
I would write a letter to the FAA.
Well, we'll do that. Well, and and we'll get, you know, we'll circulate it around so people can sign it.
I think each person should send it.
Yeah.
It's harder to. There's money pieces of paper instead of one.
Oh, we sent several of them. That's what you're saying.
Yeah, and put them on paper, you know, so it's.
Yeah. But can you imagine, Jim, taking off, I mean, we had the air accidents coming in here and I really die in their circle. Can you imagine taking off at night here in the fog, which happened to Lucero in Boston? And you're headed towards those wind towers and all of a sudden you develop engine trouble? Just think about that. We don't have them there now, why wouldn't we ever allow them? A big financial reasons to put them there. I asked him twice, why are you looking? Wouldn't say what he wanted. No, he wouldn't say.
No, it's it's financial reasons, we know that.
Yeah.
But this is all due to me as a black sheep.
It was due to me, it was due to me till last night. Oh, miracle, I have flown over those towers uh twice. I went from where I was spraying up in the random area, uh south of Hainoa there, you know? Them guys had them down on a dark night when the light, the lights were off those towers. They were supposed to be on, but there's nothing saying that the kids, they're gonna stay on. They might not work, huh? Everything's mechanical, might not work.
Breaking on the Hainoa?
Yeah.
They weren't even on the charge and they're not.
Well, the.
That's how I got involved.
Well, the norm, yeah.
That's why I get these notices. Why was that, like, these barriers to admit that I don't get those notices?
So, um now, this this two, this two virus in the way could have fought a path. Um is that, is that, if put back as an FAA standard, why is the FAA not approved?
That's why I can't figure that out. I really can't figure that.
I I I certainly uh find a verbal document, you know, to get answers about this, but I.
You know, I used to be personal friends with the safety officer of the Rapid City Flight Safety District Office. But he retired, Dick Bongos, you know? Yeah, well, he retired, so now I don't know who to go to. But we'll, we'll do a little check, anything I find out, I'll let you know.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Thanks for putting up with us.
That's, that's our job. That is, it might have been our primary job. Listen to the voice of the people.
Can you do it also, Dr. Brown?
You are, it is.
Yeah, you should talk to White Circle, please, because it's like, that's a good. Not for me, it's not gonna happen. No, I just have.
That's the conclusion we were privately writing to the FFA.
Don't write it to the FFA, write it to the.
Yeah, FFA.
The FFA.
I didn't want to catch that.
It happens, but there is, there seems to be a a gap here, though, in terms, I just don't understand how they get approved for their five ninety if that was over the five hundred threshold. That's not making any sense to me, multiple times. And now it's been.
Cause most of that, if you're gonna have a mechanic there while flying, you're gonna avoid the distractions in front of you. You're gonna veer out to the right, the planes, not to the left where they're sitting.
I, well, yeah.
So unless you've lost attitude, well, if you're an aircraft, you get in trouble, right? A pilot automatically thinks they're gonna crash every time that they're talking to the pilot, right? So you know where you're, where your exit is, just like, always know where their exit.
So if you were in any trouble, departure, like Wade said, you go off to the plane, to the planes, the flat planes, to the right, not to the left where it's elevated ground.
But sure.
This flight plan path is based on guys like Jim Shakespeare, where they didn't use the internal flight rules.
Miller has left traffic patterns. So when you are gonna depart, you are gonna depart to the left. You're going to a, a left upwind and that's, you're gonna, you're not gonna be seven miles out, but you'll be, you could be.
Right, but you're gonna depart to the, to the windward, which is to the north and west, right? Cause they're prevailing on wind.
No, but I mean, you could, yeah, there's a lot of south east winds too.
There is.
It's, and the fact that it's seven miles isn't, I mean.
You know how many of these obstructions exist up to airports you call them every day? A day at your mall?
They do, but we're in a small town rural airport. I don't know. It just seems, it was, it may be legal and maybe within the bounds of standards, but it seems massively irresponsible.
Well, come on, Jim.
I have, I haven't actually pulled that up cause I get in my pilot's license, I get through Mitchell and it's amazing how elevate, how disoriented elevation can you be with, I mean, especially when you're in a climate.
We're gonna call, we're gonna call the Dean Borner as the head county board commissioner. On two twenty six. Um, Andy is really wanting to do, that's too busy. So we'll do it quick, then we'll come back to the consensus agenda.
I swear to God, I'm a whole lot easier than what they just had to go through. I'm just here to invite you all to achievement days this week, Thursday and Friday. Uh, we start at nine o'clock on Thursday, judging static exhibits. We do public presentations and fashion, well, fashion review will be over lunch and then we'll do public presentations, cats, dogs and rabbits on Thursday. We'll be done about five o'clock. And then everybody goes home and gets ready for Friday for the livestock shows. We are going to proceed, even though it's going to be really, really, really hot. We are going to proceed with that. Um, you don't have to come to achievement days to qualify for the state fair. So if anybody is concerned about livestock safety or whatever, they can leave those animals home and they'll still be able to go to the state fair. Um, so that's gonna be our, our workaround for the heat. Um, we're gonna let them tie outside to their trailers if they want to and stuff, so. Hopefully everything goes well. Um, free supper at five o'clock. We're doing, um, we're growing burgers. We're starting out the concession stand instead of our regular barbecue that we've been doing. Um, so we're just gonna do burgers and hot, burgers or a hot dog, chips, beans and water, um, five o'clock and then pregame sale about six.
On Friday?
On Friday, yes.
And Thursday, uh, but Thursday's a Friday watch. Yeah, can I also say?
Yeah, Thursday lunch is roast beef. Friday is pork loin at lunch. And pie. So if you need pie, Suzie's still looking for pie donors. So if anybody wants to bring a pie, here's pie too. Um, the other thing I wanted to discuss with you was, uh, a camping spot at the state fair. Um, last year I had asked you if I could have the state forage offices um, spot on the campground and you said yes. And I asked the state forage office if they needed it again this year and they said no. So, um, they offered it to me if, um, if it was, if it's okay with you guys, it's two hundred and ninety-five dollars for the week is what they pay. And that includes the parking cap, um, the parking permit for me to park beside my camper and the admission for me for the week. It's two ninety-five again.
I don't, because they don't, we don't have like the driving, we don't have mileage up that they're going.
So if you pay that, that's the only expense I will have for state fair. Um, on, when, I could take projects down on Wednesday. Um. I should, oh, they're doing it here. They didn't tell us.
So.
I would take projects down on Wednesday, um, use the county car, take projects down on Wednesday and then, um, come back, get my car and go down. No, I take them down Tuesday because we judge on that day. Take stuff down on Tuesday, um, yep, and then go back on Wednesday with my car.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I got it.
Yeah.
Feel you.
The consensus.
The consensus.
Yeah.
Two ninety-five.
Two ninety-five.
Hello.
That's all we got.
Good luck.
So do you see here? Come on, see us Thursday and Friday. Thank you.
Give it thanks in a place. Back to the consent agenda.
Not for a comment about previous discussion.
Sure.
Would you like me to craft a letter that says the county commissioner shares these safety concerns and if we hope the F A A looks at it?
And then what?
And that the F A A, right?
Yes.
F A A looks at it with all burns.
Yeah, I'm, I don't.
I don't have a problem. I should do that.
We wanna pay these people their due. I mean, their legitimately concerns.
Better.
That's unfair.
Dump that on us.
I don't know.
How that happened. Well, look at that.
I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the consent.
Agenda, I'll second.
The motion is second. Move the consent agenda, any other comments? Any general favor, aye?
Aye.
All same side. Motion carries.
Okay. Shane. Have you received this yet?
No, I haven't.
Okay, that's Josh's resignation letter. Josh has, uh, announced his resignation for the tent. He has full time. He would like to remain on as P R N. Uh, just make the transition to our new deputy. Easier on everyone. Um, I do have, I guess first I'll ask for approval to hire Anthony Howerson as non-certified full-time deputy sheriff. Uh, he's in this family moving here from Brookings area, or the Smith area, sorry. And they have three children. They're going in school.
Okay, by me.
Do you need a motion?
Please. I'll make that motion.
Second. He's not certified.
I have a motion in the second to approve Anthony Anderson.
Eighteen twenty, yep, eighteen twenty-two is starting.
Any other discussion?
Yes, uh, he's not certified. This, the county paid to give him certified.
The accounting will pay him his forty hours a week wages while he attends the academy.
But he pays for the academy?
Nobody pays for the academy. It's free.
Right.
Well, it comes out. Well, a cert charge of tickets. Right. But we don't, you don't pay us. We don't get charged for the academy.
Defenders pay for them.
Do we have? We, we don't require any kind of.
Nope.
Time for that.
No, a lot of, a lot of departments do and they don't hold up for anything anyway, so. Cause they only have the classes, what, twice a year? Three, three times a year. They run through thirteen weeks. Yeah, so. I would like, I would like, I would like to think that, uh, him moving his entire family before he's even walked it, you know, for the first day at work, I think it shows a lot of dedication, in my opinion. So, and I've had the discussion with him that if everything's, you know, working, I expect, you know, get three years out of a guy before.
I might miss this. This is a guy you approve or something?
No, no, I, when we announced the application, he called.
Any other discussion? Any other general favor?
Aye.
Aye. All same side. Motion carries.
Okay, now I will ask that I can keep waiver on, uh, to help that transition. Um, he wants to be done with this full time on the tent and, and work hours after that, but not be on call and just help with the training and stuff. So I ask that we, because of the way we parted, it's been a smooth transition. I just ask that we give that respect.
No problem budget-wise in doing that. I approve that. I mean, I approve that.
I don't wanna do that officially. He, he's not really resigning then officially, right?
He's resigning as full time.
Full time for us.
And he'll need a motion. He'll speak to that effect. I'll make that motion that he's resigning as full time. Going to, to the P and R. P R N status. And as needed, then through the transition of training the new officer coming in. Second, if you haven't had one.
You have a motion in the second. Any other discussion on that? Any general favor, aye?
Aye.
All same side. Motion carries.
I also like to approve the hiring of James Waldrop as a part-time deputy. Entry wage eleven, or eighteen twenty-two an hour. He will stay on after that as a scheduled part-time.
Is he also an E M T?
Yeah, uh, I think he's E M T, he's a firefighter.
Firefighter. You, is that, you put, you can give him a lot?
Yeah, up nineteen hours a week, no more.
And he plans on being able to do as much as he needed to, you think, hopefully?
Is he?
Is he, is he doing?
He does gas for his day.
Yeah.
But mostly weekends is the biggest.
He's not.
No, he's not.
Is he taking any moves to become certified?
That's, uh, he has a year to figure that out. So in a year, probably, I mean, that's our limit for, uh, non-certified law enforcement. Is a year, so. In a year, we'll discuss these are, and if he, you know, if it came up to where he did want to go to the academy, that would be on him. We would not pay him hourly while he's on. And if he doesn't, then the position would just be reopen.
So after.
Motion to approve that hire.
Second, James' motion.
Second, any other discussions?
So after these changes, what's your head count? Full time? It'll be back to two and a half.
Any other questions? Appreciate it. Any other general favor, aye? All same side. Motion carries.
And let you guys know, I will be leaving tomorrow for the great Sturgis again for.
Saturday.
Yeah, on private. You read your. You read your Harley out there? No, I'm not a Harley.
It's funny, it's, the guys are around, obviously, the cover everything.
Yes. Like you said, Joshua will be even.
There, Sturgis is so short this year that as law enforcement commission, we approved, um, some requirements for, for out-of-state officers. We approved, we approved dropping some requirements for out-of-state officers just to try to get enough law enforcement together for the.
We just get less qualified guys now.
Right, that's right. Hopefully, angels look scary or something.
So we have, we're about eighteen on the, just on the streets or.
Yep. Makes it shorter of officers this year.
Okay, thank you, Shane. Thank you, guys.
Excuse me, I have a couple questions.
Oh, sure.
So last night at the city council meeting, um, Jerry Verder sure for this that, uh, the, uh, some city councilors and some commissioners were together and met with you. What do you think they'd like to discuss what we said happened with me?
I don't believe so.
No, I didn't hear it.
She wants to know what happened at the meeting yesterday. Exactly. No comment.
Okay.
Concur. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, our time there is off on our, I was about hearing, I don't know that.
Well, there is one advantage. Nobody came to speak in advance.
Well, they never came, so. Um.
I mean, move your.
So wouldn't we just, who was changing the name?
It had his mother on it. She deceased. She never.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay, so Jim Jones, maybe?
Yes.
Jim Ashenbaum, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
The motion is second. Any other discussion? Any general favor, aye?
Aye.
All same side. Motion carries.
Let's do a sign that way.
Just sign the back here. Right.
It's at the bottom. Oh, it's under back. I can't remember.
Okay, yeah, we'll get to it here. Okay. Um, so, yeah. Hold up. The trigger tracks.
Did we approve that already with a motion in second for passage?
Yes.
Okay. But do we have to, you know, do it as a county or not?
Yeah, because what they've been doing is the planning and zoning commission looks at it because most other counties have that formal planning and zoning. So when the architects, engineers and surveyors do their work, that is language that appears in there. And then there's a resolution that the commissioner approves, which is a great life for the registered piece. On the.
Potential.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Are you?
Do you need to do it separately? Is there two official tracks?
No, it's one class.
Okay.
So we made a motion.
Wait.
By second.
A motion is second to approve the tracks. Any other discussion? Any general favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All same side.
It's basically a formality because in other places, the planning and zoning commission might be members who are not.
Yeah.
That's right.
You just have to tread the remover for about an hour.
Okay, uh, the special is coming along. We did that as well.
Does that, oh, okay, I'll make a motion. We adopt, uh,
proposal.
The, 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 the opposed.
Propose.
Propose.
Resolution.
Second. Of course.
Yeah. No, motion is second. All the favor, aye?
Aye.
All same side. Motion carries.
I'll get my tongue straight now.
Yeah. Um.
Yeah.
Are you gonna draw up the pipeline? You know, the, the way that's the way.
Yeah.
Public discussion, okay.
I'll file a notice on behalf of the commission.
Jeff, thank you, Randy, for road bridge stuff. Like continued discussion from a couple of weeks ago, old Brad.
Okay, so to catch up on, from, from last meeting, there's, there's resolutions to act on. There's two resolutions to remove two bridges from the list. One of them was replaced with a twin pipe that's not long enough anymore to be considered a bridge. We just formally sent that to the D O T. So they take it off the, the list. It, it is the one with twenty-one. It's this one right here.
Okay. What's the last three digits for the bridge number?
One five zero.
One five zero?
Yes, Iverson Bridge, what we call it.
That was replaced with five.
Yeah.
Motion required.
That's twenty-two, that's twenty-five.
Requires a motion and then a report.
Uh, I would move to approve resolution twenty-two, twenty-five.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to approve resolution twenty-two, twenty-five. Any other discussion on that removal? There are none.
You're talking about, we need a motion.
This is three X one, twenty, twenty-five. That's the Iverson one, sure.
The second one?
That's it.
Yeah, all seven.
One fifty.
Yep. All this, did two of these go together? There's two resolutions.
There's two of them.
Right.
Yeah.
The twenty-two, X twenty-five is the one over here. Any other discussion? We give it one. Luke, would you roll call, Luke?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I would move. That's a little presser.
There's number one.
Okay, just. Get to that.
I thought we would progress. Might be over the range of stats. I'm sorry.
Not only that, I don't. Okay, we, we just approved twenty-two, X twenty-five.
Everybody on board?
Yes. Now, Jim just made a motion to two, twenty-two, X twenty-one.
I'm second.
Where's this one?
That one is, it's specializes. Seven, two south and two and a quarter east of St. Louis, Florida.
That's a, township vacated that right away in two thousand and nine. So that, that's just cleaning that up. There's.
That's getting.
Just getting it out of there. Yeah, yeah. But, you know, the state doesn't know that the township vacates.
Times.
They did that motion, that's cool.
I'll make that motion. Sorry. Motion's been made.
And seconded.
And seconded, okay. So we're just talking about.
I haven't voted yet.
So the bridge is gone?
No, it, it, it's there. You, and there's, there's no road. I didn't go knock on the doors and cut through their feedlot and get to it.
That's the one by mom, right? We're going to. Yeah.
Okay, so.
And it's not restricted in which access you can enter.
What's that, the screen one?
Cause they can access, they can access from your.
It is, it's not road. You can't.
So.
So it's not road. It, it's, it's not road, you can't, so, so, it's not road, it's not, it's another, it's law, that's a whole other thing.
It's a pasture.
Yeah, that's very nice there.
Okay, motion is second, any other discussion on that one? Hey, Ben, Luke?
I.
Dan?
I.
Jimmy?
I.
Okay. All right. Motion carries.
And then there's twenty-seven that's in there, which relates to this thirty-twenty-two, twenty-one sixty-six bridge, I believe.
Okay, so what we have here is, that's kind of, I see it's been like Jerry Bott's. Just considerations. Um, okay.
This is the one you emailed to me.
Oh, oh, okay, and, and that's very good, so, these first two, and we can, that one on, it's, this one, or, these first two, we're, we're looking at removing that. Or, or removing it, so there's a federal program to remove bridges too. And, and, and this is just a cleanup application, it was, all applications were submitted, but I gotta clean up that resolution. We, we have some time there, cause I know Jeff was gonna visit with one of the, some of the landowners, if we can pull them, there's no pulling of an application, we just cannot submit, right? So we don't need to do anything on that. Yes, we need to, uh, to pass that resolution.
This is the.
That's part of the application.
The consideration to do something with it.
Yeah, it's to not actually remove it or work on it, just to approve the application, basically. Yeah, the, the application is to remove the bridge.
Is this the one by Bob's?
No.
Right.
Sixty-one.
So many bridges.
Um. He goes straight east to Homer Cracker's, a mile in north.
Okay.
Is this the one you need to talk to some of the neighbors about?
I was gonna talk to Snider's boy, probably.
Then why would we want to do that today? If he hasn't talked.
Well, and so, so what I, what I'd like to do is.
He can pull it.
Is, is we can pull it, I mean, if, if, if they, they come back and say, no, I'll just call the DOT and say, pull the application. But I had to have the applications in, I can have a chance of all.
But if, but if we say, if they say yes, then we have to.
Then we just keep going.
Keep going.
And approve it from there. So you, you.
We need. That's true, bridges are this.
I'll second.
Do we need initial, Jeff? That's it. Any other discussion? About application? Hey, now, Luke?
I.
Dan?
I.
Jimmy?
I.
Jimmy J. Very, I, motion carries.
Okay, then Brad, would you say one of those could, would, two of them out of there? Of those three?
Yeah.
Or is it okay just to leave it in there?
We, we can leave it in there, because, um, I just, yeah, I just, the resolution is part of the application, there's all, there's, it's not.
Now, then there's the structure thirty-twenty-two, dash one sixty-six, that is the one that Jerry Bott was.
No, that's actually when you go by these to Homer Cracker's, it's still on the park. One of the bottoms is.
I'm just gonna have one on here.
Well, that, that's the last one on there, it's a discussion on the removal of natural action.
The one sixty-six one?
That's the one, yeah.
Cause that's this one, that's one forty-four.
It, or is this one right? Yeah, right there. It's two fifty, uh, uh, two ninety, dash one forty-four.
This one here, yeah.
That's the wrong number.
That's about, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's two ninety, what?
One forty-four.
Forty-four.
So it's not two twenty-one sixty-six, correct?
That's not true.
I think that's the one we just did. Perhaps a mistake.
Well.
It is not two twenty-one sixty-six, and that one is. That one's right here. And it's not that one.
Okay, so I can cross that off with.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Okay, what, what bridge are we looking at?
Well, this one now, is this one here.
Yeah, it's this one right here, two ninety, one forty-four, right there. Is, is that the bridge number of what we just wrote on, two ninety, one forty-four? Or did we vote on the bridge number?
Well, we voted on the one you said.
Yeah, yeah, those are the, those are the ones that, that we want, we're applying for, since I don't. We have, we have not voted on the two ninety, dash one forty-four.
Okay, were we correct in voting the way we did?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're good.
So now we need a motion on one ninety?
Yeah, no, yeah, the situation with this one is, this is what we talked about last time, that it's a grass road. The stream is too big, so we're looking at a, a, a larger bridge.
This is one forty-four.
Yeah, the.
Oh, I think not two ninety?
Two ninety, one forty-four.
One forty-four.
Yeah. So. Just, that's, it's that one.
Okay.
So this, so that one, you're saying that the, the street, or it's two, the bridge can't contain the stream, or the.
Yeah, yeah, so, so what would.
Can't look like that.
We look, we look, we looked at replacing this bridge, but, because the stream, the stream is large there, the, the, the actual size of the bridge to replace it is very large. And very expensive, and we're. I had been open today, so, I was, when I was saying like a million and a half, I bet it's. Another couple of hundred grand more than that. So it's, and cost benefit, that's what's down, that's what we're talking about, yeah. So, so I visited with the DOT, so there's no issue about, uh, transitioning from using that project, you know, federal replacement project, we're looking at a federal removal project. So we'll just keep going, and we'll, we'll, we'll just, we'll do a project to rent the bridge out, and it'll be gone. And, 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 and you want those, that truck, you want, you know, it's a liability, you want, you want.
Is it, is there a sense of things? Leaving it there and, and releasing yourself of all liability, selling it like to the township, or to that landowner? Or do you got, got anything like that ever done on?
I have not, no, I don't wanna say no. Um. I don't know that it's that, that.
I don't know that it is either, but.
Well, it's, yeah, I see it, and there, so that there's a process.
To be right there.
It's, and the township won't vacate, uh, right away there, because there's, when you come in from the north, there's farmland on each side. So they, they, they'll use that. Um, but they'll have to come in from the north, they can't go with the bridge anyway, and they have it for a long time. And I don't think there was.
We got feedback, where the, the landowners around there do use it to run four-wheelers across, or something, but, I mean, it's. I guess the question would be, is there any scenario in which the bridge could stay there, and liability be really?
That, that.
No, cause the county's land is all.
Yeah. So, I was so agree with you. You gave some, but it was called, no. Uh, we sent, we sent the bridge to, because there was blocking, it was blocking, and he was gonna, he was gonna, he was already falling down, he was gonna tear what was left of it out of the creek. So, but if you leave, if you leave the bridge standing, according to state statute, the county is responsible for all bridges in the county. Whether it's a, a good bridge, bad bridge, or whatever, we're responsible. So there's no way we can get away from taking a liability off, unless it's vacated.
Then it's not part of our county system.
Yeah.
But if it's vacated, we're gonna take it down.
We sure should.
Because it's a hazard.
Right.
And it would become a hazard, probably for the people who are now inheriting that land, to the middle of what was the former road, and it had thirty-three feet, thirty-three feet, each and a half a bridge.
I mean, I mean, and I understand about what the four-wheelers are costly.
I think we're all.
If it were me, I would, I agree with you.
Yeah, it's obviously easiest for us to.
Yes.
To, to say that, but I'm not done with that, I just, if it's, yeah.
So I just don't, I just don't think there's a way we can get our county not being liable. Even if we vacate it, we're still liable for that bridge.
It's on a particular road, so we can't vacate the road.
But even, but even if the township vacates, we're still liable for it, because the bridge is there.
In a sense, it's an attractive nuisance that we create, and have a lot to deteriorate to the point, uh, that it's nuisance status. Uh, which is appealing to us, lack of maintenance, is dangerous to the public, so.
If we can move it to a federal tear-down project or.
That's, that, and I've already taken the liberty of pre-clearing that, so, yes, the DOT is on board, if, if you. And, and all I really need is, uh, a vote, and then an email from, from Jeff to Doug Kinnumber, and then we'll take care of it, and we'll, we, we'll project at the same. Five percent natural, whatever it is, it, so it's, doing, doing how it's a bargain.
We would pay five percent of the removal. It's only five percent?
It's, I think it's like, if the state kicked us some money, it's in that like six-ish.
Do you understand?
Did you pay attention?
I thought I saw.
He did. Well. We don't, we need a resolution for that, Alex, it's got.
He says a simple motion and then an email.
A motion, when, when I, when I visit with the DOT, for us to, for us to switch them around, a motion and an email from Jeff and.
We can always follow that resolution from this.
Yeah. They, they, he didn't need minutes or anything, he just, you, you tell him. So, so, cause what would happen is, there's an agreement between Anne County and the DOT got this, on this project. So they're gonna amend the agreement, so there will be further action, because there will be an agreement between the DOT and Anne County, to switch from a replacement project to a removal project. But that's some work that Doug, can, the DOT will. Prepare that, and then we'll just go.
So this is, is not the same scenario as the last bridge you were talking about?
No, no, totally different. This one's already approved, we're just changing the scope of the project.
I have a motion. To rule it, in a sec, in a second. Any discussion, more discussion on the.
So we are, the motion has to remove the bridge, done the deal, Jeff can go, run the, with, all those are good marks.
So.
It's gotta get, it's gotta get approved.
But I mean, as far as we're concerned.
Yeah.
Cause I, I mean, I agree that, I think, there's probably no way to get out of liability in the transfer ownership, but talking to the landowners, I've told them that we. Explore every available option before we make the final decision to. I don't know if I've done that, or if we have done that, just yet, I'd like to talk to Alton.
So if the contractor pulled that structure onto, let's say, bottom's ground, and then they chose to use it on their private property, the trust here?
Um, we have done that. Where, where as part of the project. The, uh, I've done that on trusses before, where as part of the project, we've offered them up, and some people use them as bike paths and the like. And so I'd be careful with those, because they're a lot. Then it's moved to a bike path, and, and, a, 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 a bridge, but we have done that, where they, I've, I've seen. Like, like, what about bike blocks, and they left them out of the field, and then they sat there for, they're probably still sitting there.
My bike was in the shop, so I took the load that's in like.
Yes. And, and, so that's, and, and partly, you know, we're, we're putting the buttons out and the whole thing. So it'll be, uh, restored to a, a natural.
And what, what do you do with the finished project, then? Cause now all of a sudden, you got a grass road that goes into a creek.
Well, I mean, it's, well, that'll be the, the, that'll be, part of the project is to sign that, so, so again, it gets to that end, and then you go up there, and then there's, there's like a barricade, and then you've got those three red. There's like three, three red, you know, signs that, so. Right in the middle of the road, so you don't hold anything.
So is that my responsibility, is the county getting down the road to maintain those signs, so?
Yeah, very hard to see, someone goes out there, I shouldn't say so, aside, um.
Um, do you maintain, don't you maintain township road signs?
Yeah. No, no, so then we, the township, we will put them in, according to all, so rules, as part of this project, but then the, the township will almost sign.
Is that?
Okay.
Well, more discussion?
I mean, I. I'll withdraw my motion at that.
Yeah, I mean, just one more phone call would be all it takes.
Okay.
Cause it's a time-sensitive thing, if we can.
With your motion.
It's, no, it's not necessarily. As we meet on some months. It's, again, yeah, no, no, it's, we, we, we could come back in, in, in September, and, and, I, I don't want to. So handle everything that I push.
And I don't wanna draw it out either, I just wanna make sure that, like I said, I've talked to landowners, and I gave them, told them, we can give them heads up before they find a decision, and so.
But, so, so back to, when we sold that to the landlord, it's a bad idea for them to. Take you. They'll have a hard time, you cannot bend it on and the butt, without twisting it up.
Being it's in your district, Dan, this is only recommendation for me, not the board, I would say talk to Alton, and get his, his opinion on doing or leaving that. Uh, it's kind of, it's kind of on the line. Cause I, I understand, if, if they're using a front rail, or circling across that bridge to the pasture, the field, and now they're gonna go a mile out of the way, and a mile back, would that be correct? To get to a road?
At least, at least, at least, it might, it's gonna be rare.
It might be more.
Is, is, if, if it's, this is my, my question, if it's Alton's recommendation, that, that selling that bridge, stock and merit with a. The disclaimer included, that you understand, you're accepting full liability for use that bridge.
But they gotta move it out of the right way. The bridge can't stay in.
I wouldn't even have to be vacated.
There's anyone that have to be vacated, and.
When you said the landowners aren't willing to do that? I don't know.
Okay. The only other thing is, if they don't vacate it, they would have to take the bridge, physically move it over on the other, which you're not gonna, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that would, that would. That's gonna be hard to do, like I said, without twisting it up.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing off the rock, so everybody knows too, is, so this is a, this is a, 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 a federal highway project. So, so we go from a replacement, and then, and, uh, we're gonna do a replacement, then we're not gonna do the removal, and we're gonna, you leave it, um. Uh, the federal highway is going to expect all the money that we spent on that one already. Basically, right now, engineered, there's, there's a lot that pays back, a hundred, at a hundred percent. So, just so you know, and I, I'm not trying to, I'm gay, I started my mind, insert myself, but, but that, that is, that, that will, that will come up in the future if we. Now, if we do a project, like a removal project, I've already cleared that, that's cool. Cause we're doing something, you know, we, we did the analysis, and the results of the analysis, we decided, not worth it, we're gonna remove it, that's a legitimate action. So, that is.
Where, so, where, where do you wanna go, should we take care of it today, and remove it, or do you wanna talk to him again?
Like I said, I would prefer that we, I would talk to him first, and, if, like I said, if there's no time.
It's a four-mile deep tour, to come back south, go to the county line, come across, come in from the north. I, I think the road in from the north was split. I didn't ever drive it from the north, I just looked at it on, so, it looks to me like they have to go two miles north and come down to access those fields, so.
And I assume, by the sound of the state of that bridge, it's probably what they have to do with their equipment, anyway.
Oh, yeah.
But, just for purposes of like checking the P O, what type of things, probably around, or in there, whatever, I suppose, check the catalog.
Yeah, and then, like you said, talk to Alton, so, we didn't do this, and then talked to Alton afterwards, and said, well, you could've done this, and then we have to explain that.
Okay.
So, keep that on the agenda for next month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else, Jeff, I guess a couple of, uh, maybe discussion area?
Just one quick thing, our concrete pressure, I can't contact anyone, it's gonna advertise, because I can't put it together with the second bid, if we're gonna come and do it, I probably should advertise it. So we'll do that. And I'll get his contract, and look right back and see if we can prove that.
Okay, but they don't think I'm a September agenda?
Yeah, uh. We, to finalize something in the September agenda?
Yeah. It will work a bit.
Right.
I'm sure it's hopefully be here September sometime.
Okay.
Great, can you take five minutes after you're done, Jeff?
Sure. Let's grab a, Chris, grab a.
Concrete.
Concrete.
And that's, that's what I was saying?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. They won't take five, uh, quick. I wonder. I can't, I was wondering if we can just get out of what I can't, he said about it. I think McCullough asked if maybe we could get, uh, if you love. Yeah.
Great, great, this is just a for valid, you know, that policy related to health insurance, okay? This is a matter of making sure. But it's my. Yep. So then not, all of them.
Okay.
They're leaving out a wall?
Yeah.
Jan, you asked about that meeting yesterday, and I said nothing happened, nothing yet, it was just discussion. That's all it was.
And I just wanted to get it from you guys, so that's what he said to us, we're just talking.
Yeah.
We're just trying to figure out what they, the need of the need, what is shady, what is the police need?
Well, there's been no decision that it's even gonna happen.
Right, but.
If it were to happen, this is what would have to happen in this order.
Right, well, and, and my point in asking is, we did get a, a, another person, literally a merger board member, to talk to Jim before the meeting and then left about that subject.
I'll talk to who?
To Jeff, order.
Oh.
About that subject. And so I then asked, because I was clear across the room, said, excuse me, what did you hear he talk about the police in some meeting? And so then he related that, and he just talked, and tried to figure out what that mine looked like, what needs were over here, what needs were over here, what abilities were here, what abilities were there, and then he said, everybody's gonna have to go back and talk to their respective boards and try to figure out how this would even work. So he said, it was just kind of just talk, try to figure out what we could do. But I think it's important that people know that you guys, and the city, and the police, and the sheriff are all trying to work together.
And we work.
To try to figure out what is the right, what is the right.
And we've done before.
Forward motion in this situation. Well, the thing is, is that that's been denied by the city in the past, so that, that, there's been any discussion.
Over has been.
I know there has.
Not by the city council, but by representatives of the city council, representatives of this group, and like the law enforcement representatives.
But that was specifically denied by Bob Steers in a meeting one night, he said, we've never met, and, yes.
As a commission, no?
As a commission, no, but, but individuals haven't met.
Oh, yes, we can't.
Because you, you can't meet.
Because of the.
Unless I'm there.
Yeah.
Unless I'm there, so.
It's very sensitive discussion.
It is, very dis, very sensitive, and I, and I totally understand it, but I think that, like I said, the people need to know, can you answer a question? You better be trying to figure out.
A high percentage of what is discussed is the legal elements of law, and they are many.
I can only imagine, I can only imagine.
There are also personnel matters.
Correct. Well, and, well, I've been at this job for twenty-five years, and so I don't wanna break over my seniority. Good luck with that, because this is a new department, so, I mean, Doug works in the, in the sheriff's department for twenty-five years. He doesn't.
Is there any guarantee that anybody from one department would be employed by countywide?
Exactly, and by forcing something like that.
They're all contractual matters.
Right, and by forcing something like that, it might kill the people, you know, or, or not, uh, required, that might kill you. You know, I mean, there's so many things under the table to do, that I just want people to know that you guys are.
I will confirm.
You're trying to.
You need a confirmation, I'll confirm that we have discussed it, at some length.
And, and you said that in our app, so I think that that's.
Kind of a tour.
I've been two hours.
A long time.
You know, that, that's what I wanna make sure, people know that you're not just going, we're not even gonna discuss that. You're looking at every option, you're trying to, to do what's right for all entities involved here, so. That's my point, that's my only reason in asking now.
Why would people go down the stairs?
I think they wanted to rest her, and of course, we may not have water.
Is that why he was continuing to run in there?
Obviously, it's over there. I would still, are they hooking? Probably explode full time, second, we'd stop. Just now? Yeah.
Jim went and used it, and now won't stop flushing.
So we're cooking the, they shut the water off because they were working. Well, as far as I'm doing, they succeeded in getting the line to the building and hooking it up to our stub.
Right.
So I'm not sure if it's something that the city's dealing with out of the main, I've looked out to see if it's being cut out.
Because I was under the impression they get hooked up because the pipes coming into the courthouse have been redone within the last ten years.
So it will cook.
So I'm, and, and Fisher was the one that did it, so I'm assuming it's plastic.
So it should look right on, and I just know that this side of the building had water, but that side didn't, so I wonder if they turned that one back on, had problems, and they shut the whole thing out?
Doug, is everyone buried, the sewer, or let's see, the vice versa, the above ground, what is the water again?
Nope. Right now?
Yeah.
Yes, that's fresh water.
Okay, so buried one is the sewer.
Yep, and now.
That's now replaced, that's all done?
And now, like, we have new water from the water tank.
Yeah, that's the above ground.
Nope.
We just have, they just kept the toilet out in there because it. I did, when I used it, I flushed a bunch of rusty water in it, so I flushed like two or three more times.
Yeah.
Well, it gave the rusty water through, and it kept on just running full water, which it on, so.
I'm sure you guys are shut the valve off, so. I'm sure something got stuck in the valve.
No.
Valve.
So must be above ground piping for, but isn't the water?
That was just temporary water.
They shouldn't remove it yet.
All right, okay. Now I'm gonna have to go home, pee off the bell.
No, just, it's screwed right over here with you.
Oh. Did they turn the water back on?
Which is, just, just ask Kevin if we, amongst all of our teacs upstairs, do we have the chamber pot?
It is, it is.
Uh, we're gonna have an executive through on that. You can't use that, I'll just take the screwdriver and let it flush.
You have to execute, of course.
So they moved the whiskey lead?
Huh?
They moved the whiskey lead?
I don't know.
Because I had the passenger mail that had, under that, and a bunch of other stuff in there. The back from Sweden.
Oh, Mark.
Yeah.
I don't have this number, so.
That's all right, that, that's good.
Oh, this is the baseline survey? Yeah, he said they got it back, and then he was gonna give it to Jeff.
This must be your guys' job, what are we waiting for here? To become commissioners?
To commissioners.
And, oh, I'm here. Right, this is what about the bridge?
Hey, all right.
This is.
What is that? What you sent the picture of, is that the product in one of those gray like this, versus some sort of white that's in the end? Or is that the sag?
Shane, you know who that blade was?
It's just a sack?
Oh, I think it's just a regular fishing. The pot is, I, so, this is.
I know these good footballers, I know some teams, like.
How much do I owe you?
Shape of my horse.
Jesus, man, who was here? That's one of my.
Um. Last night, they said they were gonna come and touch you guys today, I said, can I make a suggestion, can you guys call them today? Someone I told the public this.
Who?
Um, the city council, to let you guys know what's going on, because our air force are coming in.
Well, Jeff Schwartz was kind enough to call some of us last night, and send me all that stuff, the letters and stuff, but that was at eleven o'clock last night. I don't think it's fair to the public if this is supposed to be the place where public comment is to be heard. How can you spring that on the public two hours before the hearing? That's not fair to the public. Can I make it up?
Okay, well, calling back order. I'd like to, just revisit that structure quick. Uh.
The bridge?
The bridge thirty dash twenty-two, two twenty dash one sixty-six. What, um?
How about two ninety, one forty-four?
Yeah, two ninety. Oh, yeah, 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 that was a yes, you have two ninety, one forty, actually. I didn't make the correction in my, sorry.
John here?
Um, anyway, that's in discussion with the landlord there and whatnot, so, um.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to remove, is that?
Yep.
Remove? Bridge two for thirty, two ninety, one forty-four.
I'll second that.
Got a motion to second to remove that, is there, any other discussion?
You've had the discussion, so.
We've, um, talked to all interested parties.
Okay. Get that for me.
There you go, discussion, no favor, aye?
Aye.
Propose the same sign, motion carried.
If you end up needing a resolution.
No, no, because what I said, what'll happen is, there's gonna be an agreement drafted, so it'll, it'll come back to you, and then you'll probably have to ask for a resolution sign.
And then Brad told me that we need to set up for the next month's meeting for a hearing.
Five-year, five-year plan.
Is it an update, is it?
Yeah, and, and every year, we add another year on the five-year plan. And that's a requirement for the, the bridge improvement grant application, so we, we need to have five.
Okay. Any, any objection?
No. No.
What, what day is that, what day is?
The sixth.
I have code.
It's so expensive, I don't know who's.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, thank you, guys. Just going in, obviously Will's out here, are you speaking at his behalf?
Actually, he sent more of an email, he said he didn't have anything that was actionable.
Fair.
So basically, the water line project was started, it was finished. Like I mentioned, they said, as far as the internal connections, I guess that's still up in the air. That document went to the engineer's office, came back to the state attorney's office for clerical inspection, and then they expect that it should be in signed with form very shortly. So that's about it for Will, and then, I'm like, you have something for work period?
Well, we work period included our coverage of these items.
So I have that separate.
Okay.
Do we need to work on? You, does this need to be in those, I guess I?
It's just a, for now, what there's got is a policy statement that relates to the change in healthcare coverage for the commissioners, so do you want me to read it, or do you wanna read it?
I can read it. It shall be the policy of Anne County that the county commissioner may participate in the county's health insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance, and other, and any other similar benefit in the future. Said participant in health cover, care coverage shall be the sole expense to the county commissioner, participation in the dental vision, or other benefits should also be paid in the same manner as other employees and elected officials of the county, so long as they are paid, they are a paid employee and not a seasonal per diem or as needed employee. Twenty twenty-two, the split for dental vision is split, one half to the employer, one half to the employer. So, just a policy we've already made there. It's not all paid for, and there to be, uh, motion, it's a motion, it's just a formal, I just have to sign it.
Yeah, correct, after a change in the title.
Yeah. I guess, it's just a little big stuff, that would be all I, I think I have. Anyone else have anything? Any to discuss? Okay, here, Doug, Doug?
Okay, the cybersecurity, Golden West, they sent us a plan that was a little over ten thousand dollars, um, in my discussions with them, what we're doing. Um, in my discussions with them, what we're doing, we're working on some smaller projects to help identify what our issues are. And so those will be a lot less expensive and within our discretionary spending levels. And basically what it amounts to is a survey that we would provide to the employees, so they're insured, so they can identify what our weaknesses are, concentrate on those. So we would actually be doing the on the ground mechanics instead of. Community here to do that work, so. They've agreed to be a consultant for a whole lot of us money. On a case, by case basis. Um, the American Rescue Plan Act was, I was available to pull down a second, a bunch of that on July twenty-sixth. But because of an error that took place right now with my computer, I cannot access the federal websites. Because our certificate is invalid on my email address, so I actually have to resolve it before I can do that. Uh, Safety Benefits, which is a company hired by our liability. Casualty Company. Did their annual, or bi-annual inspections together. Semi-annual, every two years. Uh, we've given several recommendations on how mitigating hazards found. And they'll produce a full report of the actions that they're talking about. So, for example, um. A little storage building out here in the yard. Doesn't have anything in our insurance to cover the contents of that load. So we just purchased that one more last year, the year before. Right now that building, I started buying and burning down, maybe replace the building, not stuff in it. So there's things like that that we need to take care of. Another one is other the DOT complex that the county owns. There's a tree that's crushing against the side of the building. Continues to grow, it's gonna get into the flashing of the roof, and they're out of it. So it's a lot of little things, um, so we're reading them in June and September. And then what they asked is that we do something along the lines of what's called a work order. Where you would tell each department, have to resolve these, because unless they get word back that it has, that it has been resolved. They have covering tariffs that take place on them. So right now they're removing them as any coverage that they work under. Until we can show them we're mitigating the problem.
Is there a lock on that building out here?
There normally is. I know there's times that it's not.
You've got an expensive mower there.
Yeah. Um. The deep buttering, I have a computer that was found in the basement, the laptop, it was last used by a line carrying. Which manufactured in two thousand nine, when I pushed the power button, it blinked, and then immediately shut off, and that turns. I could feel like this bad smell like one wiring. So I'd ask that you declare surplus, and you just say. Maybe two thousand model one six three one U.
We have motion for that. Do we have to have people uh come up with an assessment that you're bored?
There's no, cause it's just. Not on that computer, not from a disposal.
I'll make a motion up to.
I'll second. Pick up. James, a few seconds?
We're doing hard this quarter. Which, who's like, wait, wait, wait.
Take away.
Got a motion to second to uh discard the applicable laptop. Those are the favorite, aye?
Aye.
All same side. Those are carries.
The direct deposit update, um. Before you all leave, you need to fill out a form so that we can send your check by direct deposit. And then there's some other departments that haven't been sending in theirs. But actually, that delinquency was good because Coin Bank had prepared the documents for us to enter an agreement. So what I do need is a motion from you granting authority to myself, my deputy, the treasurer, and her debt. Execute the necessary paperwork to allow for ACH. A direct deposit.
So move it.
I heard Jim Jones say so first. Would you be the second then?
I will second that.
Do you have a discussion? Here you go, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All same side.
Ah.
Motion carries.
Okay, I had this discussion about the eye dental insurance plans. And I was going to bring this to you and explain to you, but quite honestly, I can't do it justice. So I'd like to know if you'd like those two vendors to come back, it would be risky and dicey here to come back, personally, on the internet. Uh, to discuss with you, but they both said that they can provide us efficient savings. Especially through dental, or no, through via the vision care insurance. Enough savings that it would clearly cover any increase we were offered on life insurance side of the blood. So my recommendation is to have them come do it and pitch it, because I know after looking at it, that you're gonna ask me questions that I don't have the answer.
But sure, when they're here the first time, it certainly saves you, but risky.
Oh, the I guess, it's like a hack.
On the vision, dental is definitely.
Yeah, well, and Mike and Dice said the same thing. So they both have proposals. But I thought, yeah, probably better if they pitched this.
God, it's worth their time and all the way out here.
Yeah, they actually said.
A few people have signed up for it.
When we got peeled off and made a direct customer with VSP, I had to start dealing with people in San Francisco. And the way that that system works is they look at each of you as a group regardless of your size. And so we're this solo group of county employees, whereas if we go on with one of these other companies, we become part of a much larger group. That is umbrella of our employees. So the part I don't, the part that's confusing me, I guess. Why would they have pitched that? Why didn't he have to pitch it before? Mike? Don't know. I found a letter that Sandy had sent to them saying that we was the agent of record for us. So I don't, I don't know how I got peeled off.
The eye dental, that was the scenario where we were getting direct and going through a broker, get some.
Yeah. They can handle it sometimes.
Yeah. If we're like tap, remember.
A tap, yeah. Yeah, there's other companies that provide similar services, but the same network or better, that can also be. So. I'll invite them to attend the next meeting.
Yeah.
So the next part goes back to the elections, and this was from two meetings ago. It arose out of the complaints of the primary election about whether or not you wanted to pursue something about changing the polling operations. Any more thought on that? My personal feeling is that we litterize for this election, and then feel inclined to deal with it during the off year.
Am I just really confused people with change at this point?
Can, can, can we change it between the primary and the?
Even if everybody were yours? Cause you have contested rigs.
They, I don't know, they could see a quick change immediately, but.
I can tell you that some of my analysis on this is, you know, I, there was a lot of feedback from some people in Redlands, that they really wish that they had one of those. And I can understand that. There was some confusion about why we chose to keep it available. But the facility at St. Lawrence is better than available. The, the whole idea of voting in somebody's home, which used to be very popular, has now largely been voiced and claimed unplanned, they didn't like it. So that, that's one option, is we can move the polling place, but not do anything. We would send out a notice to everybody that said you're no longer voting in Bailey, but you're voting in St. Lawrence, and I think we still hear from the people in the far corners, that they're now driving even further than they were before.
Right.
So commissioner districts, I need to make sure that that's right, the commissioner districts do not change, and we're locked in for ten years. But the precincts and the polling places can be changed.
Do, do we feel that there was enough awareness raised? Because of all the information, that people are not gonna say. If, if we delete things all, people are gonna say. You know what, I'm just going to the courthouse, you go there, uh.
Are there mailings that go out yet? Probably wide. For the next election, for the elements, but we can do that.
But it's on, it's in the newspaper, and it's on Facebook.
Yeah, but not everyone uses newspaper, that's the thing.
Or they can see it on Facebook or any other sites.
You get a call.
Courthouse, they own, really, if they don't have one, they can work here. I, I know. It's problematic for some people.
Well, in, in this case, for example, I did it, I did a test. And I sent Gabe Rogers' retirement to the neighboring county's newspapers. And as of yet, only the place is in publishing. So I would have to pay for legal in those other newspapers. To guarantee that it would appear. But I'm not opposed to that where it comes to elections.
And there's still gonna be a few people that are smiling with that, which would be for either.
Are you saying that the concern would be that this would encourage more people to vote early, and that's not good, or that is good?
No, no, not that it's good or bad, either way, but right now, at least we've got enough discussion and dissatisfaction. That, that at least right now, they know, I think everybody's pretty well aware of where they have to vote. There still might be a few within voting primary and didn't hear about the commotion. That might, might still be confused for general election day, and I think it's gonna be pretty few. And, and I, I mean, I think it's gonna cause more confusion and problems if we try to do this before the general. I, I think, I think, maybe, uh. Maybe we, you know, we add a general article that says we will readdress this after the general and, and. Try to appease as many voters as we can. Go back, you know, we go back to eight voting places like we were before. But now that we have. Now that we have, while we go back, we certainly have to. Uh, comply with that EEA compliance, which is part of what we got away from. Uh, going down the steps in the re-hides authority or, or whatever. We have to.
I like the idea too of having, of course, I like simplifying and having it in the district, so there's no confusion on what ballots are where, and a whole bunch of extra ballots printed that you might need to bring, because they. You might have ten people show up at this precinct, ten at this one, or the district, you know. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I really think a lot of people are, that if they're disappointed, they had to drive to San Antonio, they had to drive, I think they're gonna. They got forty-five days to vote ahead of time, if, if they're aware of that. I think a lot of people want to go ahead of time and say, ah, I just don't wanna. Drive out there that day, or. But. On, on the flip side of the poll, there are a lot of people that, that really, um. Cherish. Uh, the tradition of voting on election day at all of those. And that's important without people, which people are suggesting that we go back and order that, which I don't agree with at all. But because they're just some age, you're gonna be sick, or something comes up, and you can't vote, that's, that's general fuck you.
Did you ever figure out what the percentage was of, of people that voted before the election? Came up here and voted?
I did have a. You told me it was like fifty.
Yeah, it was pretty high.
Yeah.
How much, fifty?
Yeah. Really?
We were not expecting the number of people to vote early for primary like they did. So we actually had to reorder supplies. Because we were cut off prior. And maybe that's gonna become more than normal.
So is that considered, coming here to vote, is that considered absentee?
It is. Absent, yeah, cause you're absent of the poll itself, so. It's either absentee or absentee by mail.
And more people did that than we sent absentee, that, or how many absentee ballots?
That's funny, yeah.
Can you guys remember a general election, remember? When we've been in, I don't know, three day position? And people could not vote?
I don't.
Yeah, Frank Blair and I worked together in that military glacier to build up a balance and a plate. And then, when Betty Morford was on there. There was an election that took place to them, remember she was like, we're gonna have to do this?
That was a wheel tax election.
Is that what it was, a special election?
Yeah, because that was the first wheel tax vote. But the first year I ran, actually ran from my office. Yeah, it was around election day.
What was the turnout? Was it just pathetic?
Yeah.
Like thirty percent or something from the general election?
It was on the general.
We had a question, we told, um, on the state attorney's purpose. Second year state's website, so we could always look it up. But yeah, it was. There's no, at the time, there was no provision to, like, the wheel tax.
I mean, it's.
There was no provision to, to cancel an election. So we had it voted. But now there is.
I'm just concerned that we.
But that's just a special election.
Could, could be an ancient people's lives, especially all the people who has Jim saying, says. Cherish that trip to the polls. They love it, they embrace.
There's no looking their hair done that day too, you know? Four dollars, you should crawl in to get your hair done, so. It doesn't make any difference, Jim, so. They wanna vote, they're gonna vote.
Okay.
I would agree with the sentiment that I don't think we wanna keep changing things every six months, and that really confused people.
Cause they're gonna exist.
Yep.
Cause it's, it's gonna be a general election.
You need a motion, is that consensus or what?
Well, maybe a consensus.
It's just discussion.
Okay, you ready to talk about budgets?
Excited about it.
Oh, thank you.
You got it?
Hold on. Can you, and last, we missed the. Cyber security.
Oh, just that we're gonna piece through the project now, and we're gonna do most legally ourselves.
Okay. It's all I've got.
If you look at the, hopefully we all have the same front page, I highlighted the yellow. These are the ones we need to talk about. So if you follow the X Y Z formula here, under the American Rescue Plan Fund. Under Board of Commissioners, that is where the money sits for the American Rescue Plan. Now, we've already received three hundred and seven thousand dollars and change. We're going to receive another three hundred and seven dollars. So on the revenue side, there's gonna be six hundred and fifteen thousand and change to spend on American Rescue Plan. The plan, as I know it from you guys, is the elevator is the priority of spending. Pay what we have in the reserve fund, pay the balance out of ARBA. So the question for you is, do you want to put money into a budget to spend? From the ARBA funds on the elevator? Which goes back to the question, do you think that that elevator project is just gonna happen in twenty twenty-three, or is it gonna start in twenty twenty-two? Question, yes.
What does this do to legislative audits, decisions about whether or not.
None, because this is a special fund.
We, we know that.
We transfer it to general and don't spend it, then we're in trouble.
Okay.
We leave it in the special fund, which is the alternative, is we leave it and we deal with it when it happens.
I would leave it, yes, deal with it when it happens.
That, that's my recommend, that's my.
What about here? I, do we feel, you've been more contact, right, we're, we're at the elevator?
At the point on that, we'll let it out for bids. As soon as the help gets done flipping it.
So likely.
We're gonna have to mention here, it's the issue, sure.
Right, there'll be engineering fees.
We can use the twenty, the two hundred and fifty thousand in the reserve fund. For any expenses in twenty twenty-two, starting into twenty-three, and then we can do a formal budget transfer from this fund.
Okay.
To that.
I got insurance two fifty that we got in that reserve fund already.
Yeah, two hundred. This is the fifth year, so.
It is two fifty, okay.
Yep. So we're looking at it's gonna be probably about another.
Two hundred.
Let's say two hundred, two hundred, just, I'll figure, another two hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah.
Just, I'm just figuring it's not gonna come in in what they saw.
Right.
And I might have lowballed it.
And then we got the window thing, too, and then come out of that.
That's already budgeted, that's twenty-five thousand. So if that's short, then you would have to deal with shortage, like if the guy comes back to the wire, that ten thousand.
Well, he's, okay. Will's not here, but on that window, is that just recocking the windows?
Yep, just taking the flashing off and recocking.
So that means recocking from the outside.
As far as I know, it's from the outside, cause they talked about a lift, a man lift.
Is there any discussion of any need for?
Tough point.
Tough point.
The guy was here, he did a survey, and Will's got that, I think, out of here three or four.
That's probably happened.
Uh, I don't know that he's got the formal estimate back yet. Because they would just do the areas that are injected, oh. Then they're gonna be the.
The last one I know of, I wanna name the building in town, but it's a historic building in town. And this was twenty years ago. It was forty-five, fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, it's expected.
Half, the building is one third of the size.
Yeah.
Tech people are probably harder to find than boiler people are, aren't they?
Now, if I remember it, this, it comes out of Nebraska, Kansas, it comes up here.
In Minneapolis.
Okay, the next part of the market is on page two. And it is under the Rural Access Infrastructure Fund. Which is delineated within the highway department. So the Rural Access Infrastructure. So the Rural Access Infrastructure Fund. Has fifty-two thousand and change in it right now. And we just got an ACH from the state for two hundred and ninety-five thousand. So once all the, everything posts in the system, there'll be three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in that fund. And that is again a special fund.
That's the rural, this rural access one?
Yep.
How much, three forty-seven?
It'll be three forty-seven sixty when we post August business.
How much of that will survive to December thirty?
Probably all of it. Because the townships have to make application before October thirty-first, and then you guys review those applications and decide who gets what and how much.
Oh, we're in charge of that?
Pardon me?
We're in charge of deciding?
Yeah. Not me.
And.
The commissioners.
And it can also, that rate, that rate, but it can also be used by the county. If, if, we just discussed this at the Wahi District meeting out here. So the county's can use that if needed, I think it's, in my opinion, is it was originally intended to benefit the townships, with stuff that they can't afford to pay for. And I, can I ask?
Barbara?
No, that's correct, we're going to head.
Jim?
Yeah. Anyway, I asked her, I said, is there, can this money, can this money sit in a fund and not be spent? And not go against our forty percent? And he said, yes, can, we can accumulate that money for years if, without any kind of penalty or having to spend some money, it's what I was saying.
So is it, so the application process for that again? Can you tell me how that works?
They just published the application, like either a week ago or maybe two weeks with tops. So each township gets the application, they have to insert their inventory items, they have to prioritize what they're going to repair, and then they submit an application to this board to free up this fund.
Do we make those decisions individually on all the applications that are made or do we make a decision every month as they come in?
I think you consider them individually, but they're all due by October thirty-first. So in essence, you would probably spend a chunk of time getting the application.
So those dollar amounts that are associated with projects, is the township signing them themselves?
They would, when they submit their application, they're going to prioritize to what they plan to do. So it's too much like Jeff's five-year plan for county roads, at least the townships.
So if they need a fifteen-foot culvert that's two-foot diarrhea replaced, who comes up with that number?
The dollar amount.
The dollar amount.
Well, most of the time, they're going to have, they're going to have to vendor that's going to tell them what's going to cost.
What it's going to cost, they'll have to sort set out from some engineering firm or some whatever.
Yep, or somebody like Russell Hartman.
Right.
Whoever.
Some third party that says it's going to cost fifty grand or places.
That'll be much like the FEMA stuff was, where they have to find their own contractors to do the work.
I'm not positive on this, but I believe for townships to apply, they have to put together a five-year plan for the township, same as with the county.
Yes.
Let's, it seems if they're not looking forward, you know, what are the problems that you got? So appropriations out here can, you know, can foresee what's going to happen rather than the council surprises.
And that's the new stack over?
October thirty-first, Halloween.
That's when the applications would be from?
From the townships.
So we can make decisions perhaps for this.
Yeah. Yep, so my recommendation here is because it's so unknown, I mean, I can't even predict this, plus when are they actually going to start to work? Because if they're looking in November, contractors might say, no, I can't do that till spring. So my recommendation is to do like we just did in ARBA, leave it at zero. We get to that bridge, we cross it, we pay off, transfer those funds. As long as we know what the funds to that bridge is. To that bridge.
So we don't send any of that money to the township, we just pay the bill after we've voted in a particular amount?
It looks to me like we awarded them that money.
So we actually physically give them the money?
Yep.
Township, so it's out of our fund?
Yep.
As long as we approve the twelve.
We are literally procreating the state's program. That's our role. It's a way for the state to park the money here and then we have to, instead of the state sponsoring it.
But we would have the expense whenever we transfer the fund, and then if the project didn't happen for X amount of years later, then it would just set in the townships.
Rather than ours.
Remember triple down economics?
It's a trickle-down.
Well, I think we can, we can also make it that they have to. Complete the project. Well, they have to do it, otherwise, I mean, that's why most of the time, the thing they do is they go out and they do the project, then you get, then they get paid.
Then they check your compliance.
Because otherwise, you even send them the money, they might not do the project.
It drives them by some gravel.
Right, they might never do the project.
Well, yeah, what is, I mean, is there requirements?
You know, I haven't heard anything about compliance checking, have you? With this, with these projects?
I don't think so.
I've never heard of it.
But I think that's why, that's why I would say that they use the FEMA, that they do the project.
They would pay.
And they would pay.
How would you guys feel if I invited the people from towns and townships to come to a meeting and talk to you about it?
You know, they might have a program or suggestions on how we got you.
Because they were, they were in there, I mean, I could invite this Association of County Commissioners toward, but I know she's stretched really thin, and they're always talking about doing outreach from there.
How many townships are talking about that would be interested in this?
All of them. They have to have the road bridge levy in place. And I believe, and the opt-out, but we don't know if it's or or and, which brings that list down to about ten.
How many are organized? Seven?
I don't know, it's five.
Five. Okay, so. Now, I think there's only ten that would even be interested in this project?
Well, they would be more interested if they're not going.
Yeah, I think that's what's going to hit a lot of them, is they're going to go, what do you mean, we're not going to be able to do that? Well, you know, I'm not picking on Campbell, but it's an easy one to say, you know, they only levy what they need, they have very few miles of repairable road, and.
That's over thirty thousand dollars for each one. I mean, what's the township budget in Ohio? Thirty, fourteen?
Thirty. It used to be about forty-five or forty-six hundred dollars before we implemented the road leviness tax. And that was what we got along on each year.
This is not one of your runways, townships.
Well, but it's a bridge.
We have to use it.
Yes, and it's only for culverts, but basically structures that are under the threshold where we're responsible to count.
So many, eight, twenty.
So many.
So, so, so is that any money coming into this account every year?
Yeah, well, well, the program.
There's a program over the next three years.
So it'll be money.
Sure, there'll be money.
Eleven million.
So, so like when the county figures out that the compliance of this, a lot of department, they're going to have to make their adjustments and then come up to speed and then they can apply for following here, I would assume, right?
Right, and that's where I think like somebody from towns and townships or the association could come and give you a better explanation than I can.
I think that'd be good.
Are they applying? Are they applying just for a single year, or can they apply for, say, we're going to have this project, it's going to cost ten thousand dollars a year for the next thirty years?
Well, the guy that shared this plan with me was Dan Kekk in Midland Township. He's actually had all of his assets, like a better term, laid out for a long time. So he, he literally just showed me these books, he's like, well, this is our worst spot, second worst, third worst. So his are laid out in that priority. And so if he's only awarded, let's say, twenty-five thousand dollars first year, then he automatically knows what's next. So his plan does, it's already built out to show multiple years of it too.
But I'm just saying, will they be able to, will they only be guaranteed money for one year at a time? And the next year they have to apply again for the rest of it?
Just like I figured through with that.
Yep.
But then it makes you wonder whether or not they would feel bad about applying for first year, if they're going to be relying on the second year or the third year, for a multi-year project.
Yeah, I mean, they don't really want to do one-time project, one.
I think that's more what this program was designed for, is a one-year project. So do the project, get it done, get it paid for, move, then the next year you can do another.
I think it's culvert, you said culverts only.
I think it's up to two structures.
Yeah.
Bridges under twenty feet, which is, that's what we've got down here between Miller and Logan Township, is a nineteen-and-a-half-foot bridge that's part of the jail. And so this, we don't have any applications, what's going on in the rest of the county, that's certainly a place, that, that bridge, we had a doctor there the way, this is, my God, I was afraid to drive over that bridge with the load.
But the whole thing is to, that they could probably replace that with a pipe. Or they could probably replace that with a pipe.
I don't know, that, that opening is nineteen-and-a-half feet and it's twenty feet down to the creek and it runs clear up to the bridge. It's the main road.
And it has like four foot of, right, four foot of overbridge on top of the structure?
Yeah, a deep pile of gravel on top of it is the bridge that's in there.
That's a lot of gravel.
It is.
It's a hex.
It is, it's really, you're bored, drive down there and look at it.
Going the other side, because it's like this narrow.
Is that one by?
Full speed.
By the one.
Jeff did go out there, he broke some islands in, and left a bunch of fresh town, because there's something. After those two townships right here, he ducked us, he didn't, because it was washing away so bad of the edges, you know, that it had to be soaked in.
But if you, if you look at that, if they come in here with that project, that money is wiped out.
So there's no way they can do a.
I mean, we can't send all that money to.
Right, and that's why they want the opt-out or the road and bridge levies, so that the township has to scan again.
We might, we're either going to have to take it to our commissioners ourselves and look at these projects and how bad they are, or go strictly out of Jeff, Jeff's recommendation is the largest projects are most priority.
If you get a chance, and you're on Facebook, right, Jim? If you go, I put it on there, they put a cool little map on there. It allows you to look at whatever it has, put on the project list. And they give you an amazing amount of detail. And this is what Altic Engineering did, they did the countywide survey, and we conversed with the townships on whether or not it was accurate. So hopefully it's accurate, with those really slow. Gee. Oh, great. Anyway, there's a really cool map on there, and you can actually go to the dot in the township, look if there's all structure, it gives you details. So without seeing it, you can at least get a feel for what it is. So, ready to move on?
Yes.
Townships.
I wonder, there's a list of the numbers I have a few metrics for you.
I can get that for you. Want me to send it out?
Yeah.
Okay.
One more thing, if you talk to your legislators, the requirements for that thing are, I'm going to have that road tax in place, fifty cents per thousand, which is the maximum levy for that road tax, or it says, or, that says, he thinks, it says and, I think, it says or, have an opt-out in place, but there is no dollar a month to the opt-out. So I asked them at the previous Wahi District meeting, I said, so township, you have an opt-out for, for my township, has now raised dollars to fifty cents per thousand from forty, because we can see the writing on the wall, if you want to qualify yourself, we're going to say, you've got to show you're responsible for yourself as much as possible. But I went to the township, they have an opt-out for five hundred dollars and.
Twelve dollars.
Yeah, and, and I said, that's not right, but they haven't changed it yet, and.
A break in this check.
The legislators have directed me on, I said that they would take a look at it, but that I, if we talk to your legislators, it's right, it's right, I mean, that an opt-for this, for this, an opt-out needs to be equal or more than fifty cents per thousand of evaluation. Why should the township be able to opt out? Ten thousand, five hundred dollars, in my township's max, it was eighteen thousand dollars, you know?
How many townships are agreeing with the road tax?
It said ten.
Only about ten.
And how many are?
That happened with two.
But how many are opt-outs on top of that?
That would be the ten, because that's.
So how many are taxes and how many are opt-outs?
Ten that do both.
That do both.
Okay, you don't have to do both, though.
I believe you do, but who thinks it's or? I think it's and.
So, or we can figure this out, though, right?
Right.
So if we invited the county, we'll know more.
Then that's a second.
We'll know if it's a and or a.
There we go. Okay, so that takes you to page D, one slash four, which should have no highlighting on. So on the bottom of that page where it says total expenditure appropriations, if you would just write a zero in there for the two open columns, that are under ARBA and Rural Access. And then that takes us to the next page where the same columns, where you see the zero.
It's the first one.
You're like in school.
Second, first.
We go zero. We just kind of, that's a number we just discussed.
Yep. Okay. So the last page of this is D, two slash one. Where you see the American Rescue Plan, just put a zero at the very bottom again.
And the color progression?
Yep. So officially, those two are done, and then I'll talk about the remaining yellow.
Wait, what was the other one of those two?
Rural Access Infrastructure.
That's also zero.
Yep. Okay, so what you're zeroing out is the appropriations, there's no request for expenditure budget, so there's no appropriation. Okay, so going back up to the left-hand corner, you'll see the cash applied line, row, and the general fund. Right now, you're looking at a cash inject of one million, seven hundred, four thousand dollars. And then in the road and bridge fund, you're looking at a cash inject from the road and bridge fund of one million, ninety-eight thousand dollars. So again, this goes back to the caveat, if we do not have the cash on hand, then the board is going to have to tell people, we can't do that project. Right, because this cash on hand is based on money that is not spent this year and what's in the bank. And so if there isn't sufficient funds, then you got to tell them, you have to control your spending because we can't afford it. So I do ask that you take these home with you, that you look them over, because if you end up going, well, this is a priority, this is where you look at those other lines and say, do we really need one thousand four hundred dollars in BSO? Or what was we invest?
What's your other funding sources?
Uh, what land are you looking at?
Three sevens.
Okay, in the road and bridge fund.
Is that the gas tank?
That is our transfer of general fund money. No, it went to a million, two fifty, with a million of it for sure going over to road bridge. So that's the next yellow, because that's what that is. So that's your other option. If you start to see troubles in the general fund, instead of sending that over in lump sums at the end of the year, we'll do it through opting here. Because remember, we got rid of this mis, this misnomer that it's such an evil thing to supplement a budget. That's not true. That's just called life. So that's what we're going to watch in twenty twenty-three, is to make sure that we don't break the bank. And so hopefully I will be sharing with you a lot where we stand up. But as of today, the provisional budget appears as you have it in front of you. The only thing that's left here is way down here, under the tax incremental financing column, which is just to the right of center, you'll see that there's a cash balance applied of ten thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. And it shows down lower in there, that a subtotal of ninety-two thousand, five twenty-six. You can see that that number does not add up, and I cannot account for. You can see that that number does not add up, and I cannot account for that. So it's a problem within this worksheet, but I need to talk to the author of the worksheet and find out how eighty-two thousand here to ninety-two thousand. Because in order to make that balance between the bottom two lines, I had to add the cash. So I do know, however, that the appropriation amount is correct, and I do know that the net means of finance has to match the appropriation. I just don't understand what's going on within this worksheet that's provided to us, why that ninety-two thousand jumped up there.
Is that a lot?
That is the Miller or the Herald Terminal.
That's right.
Yep.
That's all that is.
That's all it is.
The, uh, check that we just got, uh, the tax refund on the Rachel project, that, that has been here anywhere?
Nope.
Um, and that, that is, that refund money doesn't affect, doesn't affect our forty percent either.
No, that's.
That's. That's what needed.
Yep, and right now, I, I have a question into Rod Forten with Legislative Audit, and the best way to do that, and I was surprised, he admitted that he's not familiar with it. So I have to send him the parameters under which we got that money, so that he can give me advice on how that works, but.
You mean award other counties that were receiving?
Not that I've asked him that question.
Wow.
There might be. There's a lot of order, like the six, ten, so it's fair. I do a lot.
Yeah, when you think about the state giving up four hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue, but they're all sitting on how many million dollars in service, billions. So, yeah, we'll, we'll have advice on that, but, you know, my understanding from your guys' topic, it was allocated to road and bridge. And, you know, Jeff's looking at getting four newer road graders, and just in his napkin math, that would roughly pay for half of that, and then the trading would pay for almost half, and then there'd be some other normal county funds put in to finish that deal.
That would, that way we wouldn't have so much, uh, to replace those graders on the desk with a stool.
Satisfied.
Yep, and for a one-time inject, it makes a lot of sense to use it on something like that.
Right, interest is now a lot more than ninety minutes ago.
Yeah. So with that, is everybody comfortable with what I've told you so far?
So those dollars up there at the top, left corner?
Yes.
Are what we need to actually have to cover everything that we have in expenses? That we don't currently, that we currently, that we currently don't have.
The theory here is that that cash balance applied is just money we have on hand from the budget year start.
And are we gonna be close to that, to me, at this point?
Hard to tell.
I mean, at the height of right now, if these go the way they are, it'll be.
Right now, when I look at the cash fund balances, yes.
But then you don't know what's gonna happen to that second half of the year.
If we have a really tough fall, a really nasty blizzard season, you're gonna see the road bridge.
Yeah.
So that's, that's including, it's a, that's including a one-time inject of, uh, ARPA.
Nope.
That doesn't include it here.
Yep.
That is just included on the twenty.
Right, so for example, let's say that Jeff seals the deal with whoever it is, Butler, John Deere, whoever, on those road graders that are sitting in two falls. If he seals the deal on that, we would literally do a transaction just for that purpose. So it would have, have almost no impact on any other budget in the county except the ones involved in that transaction.
There's another thought, that four fifty-seven, um, that tax refund, four fifty-seven, if that doesn't go against our forty percent, as long as we account for that in another.
Special fund.
Special fund. Maybe that's not bad money to, to leave sitting there if our budget allows for, um, the debt service on those graders or whatever you're doing. If, if that's money that we, that we can have, that doesn't affect our forty percent revenue, then maybe, maybe we should jump to spending that. If our budget will still cash flow, uh, debt service on those graders, because then we've got, we've got forty percent of our general fund budget in reserve, another four, four fifty-seven, is it, something like that?
Four fifty-three, something like that.
We've got that sitting in reserve that, that the law allows us to have, and it doesn't come against, because it was, it was clear that it doesn't come against our forty percent. We don't, we can't spend it on anything in one region. There are no strings attached, no, no restrictions, we have money.
Except no restrictions that are placed upon ourselves, which we include. So.
Debt service.
It can't be any other capital.
We do that as debt services.
We can't lose that.
For example.
And, uh, we're giving one.
So if, if it is restricted, we respect it.
It is.
Because it's two hundred and ten of debt service.
Yeah, you have to change the parameters up here.
It is down.
We don't.
I don't know if there's any money. I don't think there's any money. Anyway, one of your aldermen considers, you know, as a separate fund.
Well, hopefully we'll find out how much they wanted this review of that, because.
Is that a true green?
Quite a luxury.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, and the other thing is, if it's not in here under the revenue side, is that if the space will pass, if all of their debt services, they start building, they're gonna purchase building permits for each of those towns. And I think Terry or Jumper, that'd be. Ten thousand dollars.
What do you want?
Forty thousand dollars.
He said it for two foot.
Which always came in fund. So that would also help from the town side with some of those unexpected.
Because he was gonna sell it.
I remember sitting here this year, twenty twenty.
And he's gonna say this.
The.
So. Where's this? So then what he's saying?
Oh, it's all.
So, so we, when we get to the final budget point, we'll have another month, two months, I guess, in development, we'll have a little better picture hopefully of where that maybe is to.
Exactly. I know what you'll, what we'll do is we'll have a budget hearing in September, where anybody from the public can come express their opinion about the budget that hopefully will occur today. And I'll publish, and then once that's done, then the provisional budget becomes the official budget for twenty twenty-three. And then it has to be sent to the, by the first of October.
Do we need to approve this by motion today?
Yes, if you would, if, if you don't have any questions about everything that I've covered, then I would ask you to approve this as the provisional budget for Han County for the next calendar year.
Any discussion? Do we need to make a motion with whatever alteration would be made?
No, I've wrote them down, I'm all wrote them down, we should all have the same data, so. The only thing that's still a caveat is that.
That type.
But I already know what we're gonna spend and what we're gonna get.
Okay.
Oh. Do the cash applied for twenty-three, how do they, you're calculating that based on actuals and then left to be budgeted for?
Well, I got this crystal ball back there.
Do you rank that out for so much?
It didn't work for the last lottery. Yeah, and that's why, you know, it's so very important with all of these projects, because as you know, you just do these resolutions with the highway department. Each of them have a match, and that's us, we're gonna pay that. And so if some of those projects don't happen, then we can breathe a sigh of relief, but if we get a contractor who says, I'm gonna do all thirteen of them, then you probably go, huh, we better be close to it. So the key to it is, is if somebody says, well, it's in my budget, I can spend it, and say, no, right now it's in your budget, but we don't know that we have the cash to pay for it. So it's just like you and me at home. If you wanna buy a brand new pickup, you gotta make sure you've got a financing source for that.
Yeah, it goes back to, if you don't have it in your budget, you can't spend it, and if you have it in your budget, you can spend it.
Right. Except one of the times, it's like, well, it's in your budget, show me, you know, and that's township legislative audit, different people, different auditors, because, you know, I can throw a hundred thousand dollars into a line item and say, oh, that's for this, that, and other thing, but what is this, that? And that's why it's so important to have projects spelled out.
I guess I, the real question would just be if there is, if you're building any cushion into these numbers, or they're pretty.
No, literally what happens is, is I do everything below the line, and then that is the makeup number. That's why that one is so important, because if that number doesn't exist, then everything below it has to change.
Discussion over?
We're lucky to have a lot of departments that are pretty good.
Yes.
You know, we invest, a few surprises, highway department, a few surprises, library building, couple of surprises.
That's rough been done, by the way.
No. No, they still haven't been started that.
No, we were first on the list.
First on the list.
Let's see, I lost.
Okay, any discussion on the provisional budget? Do you wanna roll column this one?
No.
We don't need it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign, motion taken.
Okay, as far as this process goes, we did things a little different this year. You guys were a lot more involved in a lot of this, and.
I have a higher stage.
Yes, do you feel that being more involved has made you smarter about it?
Yeah, definitely.
Keep it that way?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the second part is, is I, I tell people, it's not my budget, my budget is auditor and appointed attorneys, and this, this thing is yours, this is your budget. I'm just the guy that compiles all of it together for this.
We appreciate your best guesses.
You know, this, 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 this budget year, friend, it's my third one, uh, it had its snags, but honestly, it went pretty smooth. I mean, I wish we'd have had that second meeting, I think it was in June, then we'd have been really far ahead of it. I did, I did learn something interesting about some of the departments. When you tell them to go back and recalculate their budgets, I think I needed to come up with some sort of tool for them, because I ended up redoing most of them. Because they just, some of them didn't realize that our insurance had gone down two years ago, and then our change of premium is zero. So I was still looking at premiums from three years ago, the fifteen percent projected increase in insurance. I send out a lot of it, but maybe it's too much, maybe it's overload.
What is, or what's the general gist of the process? None of this, just you send out the paper budgets and?
Well, what I do is I send it out a month earlier than what our calendar tells us we should, so I send it out in February, and then it used to be in the middle of March. And so what I tell them is, you know, you can start thinking about your projects so that they can pitch it, because literally, what I tell people, is it doesn't matter if you exist anywhere over here, because all of these have a dedicated funding source. Everybody in this column is in competition with each other, because there's a finite dollar amount that's gonna be budgeted, and all of them have to share. So in this case, it's like having nineteen kids, and you gotta make sure they all have shoes and hat to wear. Did it? Okay, well, thank you, gentlemen. So I'll schedule that hearing for the next meeting. And what I'm looking at, well, you guys have any opposition if we hold it during the regular meeting instead of having a special meeting?
No.
Because it's much like the other hearings, where you see if there's anybody that wants to offer comment. Historically, I've not seen anybody offer comment. So that would be September.
Thanks.
Thank you. And then I'll figure out a good time in there. And that is it for me. That's it for the agenda. There's two items in there for correspondence. That one about the surface water discharge permits is, I thought it was kind of interesting. And then the Sweetland Wind Farm, that's that request for comment that Mark Woodhurst talked about at the previous meeting before he came. That said that they had a published thing in the paper about comment, so that's what that is. And so if you want Greg or I to forward a comment on your behalf, we can do that. Otherwise, this came in the mail today, and I'll try and send this out to you, because I believe that he also has it on thumb drive, but it's that road survey from Two Hundred Fifth Street from Highway forty-five over to the Leamount area for Sweetland. So it's got a lot of pictures that I wouldn't spend a lot of time looking at.
I assume Jeff would have got that.
I'm gonna ask him, because.
I think he just got it today.
Yep, because it's addressed to the commissioners, the highway superintendent, the holder of road townships. Four thirty folks come to the last standing group.
Three executive session. Let's come on.
I'm making most of the adjournments.
Take note of it.
Give a motion. That's this year's.
Motion to second, you're all, 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 close to stop, motion period.
Four more.
Major.
Three. Four twenty-three, yours. Clocks in there ahead of time.
Okay. So you need to sign the provisional budget?
You can. I'll have to rewrite it. Kirk, grab minutes.
Yeah, I'll get the attention.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have it.
We don't have any evidence.
You know, Dan, you're not gonna be expecting it for a year. Yeah, exactly.
But I don't know. That's why I wanted, who, who brings this up and, and?
Why is it?